We just had a robust conversation about our pets.
What's this?
We just had a robust conversation about our pets.
My pet-
Okay, we're ready.
-had to have a tooth removed yesterday during his teeth cleaning and it was so funny because he was a big rap mother. He's like, "Ohhh." So drugged up, it's hilarious.
Poor dog.
Yeah, no, he was fine. He was, had a stink breath.
All right, here we go. We shall call the meeting of the City of Franco Planning Commission to order Wednesday, October 18th, 2017 at 6:37 PM. And we will start with a roll call when the clerk is ready.
Azar.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Brazen.
Here.
Cassia.
Farr.
Here.
Garrick.
Here.
Kelly. Martin. Williamson.
Here.
Thank you. We had excused absences or we had messages from Commissioners Cassia, Kelly, and Martin as their motion to approve their absence.
I'll move in there to excuse their absence.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion from our Vice Chair Farr with a second from Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to our next item, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda from the city staff, commission? I'd like for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion and a second from our same motioners. All in favor?
Aye.
Could I make a real quick comment on that?
Sure, please. Discussion on the motion.
I just realized that, and I'm not sure if this calls under administrative items, which is why I'm raising an hour instead of waiting. I would like to spend a little time talking about the garage setback requirements. We were speaking on zoning board last night. We were having a discussion about this. And Councilman Pollock indicated that city council's not likely to take any action to clarify whether or not there are going to be changes to the garage setback requirements because they're waiting for Planning Commission to weigh in on it.
Oh.
So I thought that might be something we would want to discuss tonight. We're getting a lot of people continuing to come forward zoning board looking for variances for the five setback for the garages. So if we could spend five minutes on that at the end, that would be great.
Great. Commissioner Farr, will you accept an amendment to your motion?
I'll accept a friendly amendment to my motion.
Wonderful. Is the secondor agreed?
Yeah.
And that amendment would be to add garage setback requirements discussion to administrative items. All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. And we will move now to item number three, A, approval of the minutes from the meeting of September 20, 2017, regular meeting of Planning Commission. Any edits or changes to these minutes as they were presented? Matt, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Williamson with a second by Commissioner Azar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain from that as I was not present at the last meeting.
Thank you. That was an abstention from Commissioner Farr.
I guess I should also be stating since I was-
Commissioner Goring?
I'm changing.
Commissioner Azar, so I don't know if we actually can pass that motion then.
Do we need to form to pass that?
Uh...
You could table it until next time.
Should we table our minutes until next time then?
Yeah.
So then I need a motion to table. So we've now just voted down our motion to approve.
I'll move to table.
Thank you. That's a motion to table from Commissioner Williamson. Is there a second from Azar? Thank you. All in favor of tabling approval of the minutes until the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
I need to, uh... I can't, my word is gone. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. All right, excellent. We are moving on to item number four. That is the call to audience. This is a time for anyone from the public to speak to the Planning Commission on anything that is not on the agenda this evening. So if there's anyone from the public who wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda, this is your time. You've got three minutes. You just come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You can address us on anything that's not on the agenda. If you want to talk to anything that is on the agenda, we'll get to that when we get there. Welcome.
Great. Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name's Michael Valentine. I live at 151 Jewell Street.
Welcome.
I'm adjacent to Suburban Ford.
Ah, welcome.
And one, I was checking on the internet and I noticed in the meeting notes that they had come forth on the August 2017 meeting. They had submitted three proposals for per, to extend the parking lot behind them, and I wanted to discuss that. That would involve the removal of three properties in Ferndale, two of which are zoned for parking, but there's a fourth one. And then the house right next to mine is zoned for R2 as a house. It's a very nice house. Suburban's acquired it and it sat vacant.
Got it. And you're next to that house, Mr. Valentine?
Pardon?
You're next to that house.
Yes, so the, my neighbor directly next to me, that house has not been used now for two years. So just a couple of things real quick on that. We in the neighborhood are absolutely opposed to this. One of the conditions was that when they were going to expand the used car lot, that they were going to add some spaces on that for employees so there wouldn't be as much street parking. That really hasn't happened. And one of my biggest issues is the house right next to me, they're storing new vehicles on it. So they're using that basically to store inventory, and that's not what a residential house is for. And on top of that, they haven't come to anyone in the neighborhood to discuss their plans to want to do this. In short, in my opinion, they really haven't been good corporate citizens. I mean, we should have this discussion. So my thoughts on building a larger parking lot, that's a very high-volume operation that's gone in there. I think adding to that parking lot is just going to add to more traffic and more cars. It's going to decrease the adjacent property owner's values with that. And most importantly, this goes against the Ferndale master plan by removing current housing stock. I think to take four houses out to put in parking lots are quite a bit. So I just wanted to state my thoughts on the matter and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here for call to audience on items that are not on the agenda tonight? Thank you. Any comments from staff or anything on the issue that was just raised or...? Sure. It actually turns out that was a meeting I wasn't at, so I think Josh shared that one.
Right. So since that meeting, much of that meeting was directing Suburban to set up a discussion, community meeting with the neighborhood. They haven't done so yet.
Really?
So I left a message for Suburban yesterday and today. Hopefully we'll clear that up and find out when they're going to set that up. But that was, onus was on them. We, you know, off, the staff offered to be there and give them address and those things like that. But we said, "When you are ready, come back and you need to talk to the residents before you even think about coming back to the Planning Commission." So...
Got it.
And I clarified something, or looked into the 141 Jewell Street home where there are some, some storage of cars there. They did relinquish their rental certificate. Whether they had a rental in there last year or not, I can't say, but they relinquished it last fall. And so since that time, it does appear that there's been some storage there. And talking with the city attorney, he did say that that's something that we can petition as accessory parking for a car dealer's not really permitted in R2 or R1.
Great.
So there'll be more follow-up on that. And I have all of Michael's contact info, so can definitely catch up with him on that.
Thank you. And our Vice Chair, was there, among the commission members, was there any sort of direction given to Suburban that evening?
There was a, a little bit of reluctance. I mean, I was part of the reluctance on granting expansion of these parking-
I would have been with you.
Areas. I thought as well as removing housing stock, part of the discussion with the master plan was that we were going to change those parking zones into something else. And I didn't see how, a lot of the discussion that I was engaged in was how that, how what they were planning actually solved any of the problems that they were proposing to solve. And I didn't see correlation to the two. And that's where, that's where we were at. And we said that they need to start thinking outside the box a little bit and incorporate all that great used car area and resolve into problems.
Yeah, I think there was a lot of reluctance all around. So...
Into encroaching any further into the neighborhood?
Right, right. I mean, there is, yeah, there are a couple of homes that are zone P1 and, you know, that could be up for consideration. But like you said, the master plan does try and limit, you know, encroaching further in the neighborhood and losing some of the housing stock that's, that we have, so...
It's interesting if they're putting new cars into this vacant building. They kept saying over and over again that it's not about new car stock. We don't carry-
Right.
-new car stock. We don't need spots for new car stock. But everything I see over there is new car stock everywhere. So that's strange to me, but it'd be great for the discussion if they're willing to have it, so...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, just a moment. And I do remember, as part of our site plan review, oh, sorry, for the used car expansion, there were specifically staff parking spots there. I'm interested to know if they're utilized that way. Excuse me, from code enforcement.
Yeah, so far, they're at least signed and, I mean, marked on the ground that say customer or employee. They haven't been given their official C of O as of yet. So if those aren't ready, they don't get their C of O.
Got it. Oh, sorry. I have one. It's just a fizzy water, so it didn't help. I'm okay, I just swallowed a bite. Sorry, Brett, did you have a cup? Moving on then to our first, oh, like not our first public hearing, only public hearing, item number five A. We do have a public hearing this evening on a recreational vehicle ordinance text amendment about the storage of recreational vehicles on private property, on residential property. So what we will do, as we move into the public hearing, we'll start with a presentation from our city staff. Thanks, Mr. Valentine. We'll start with a presentation from the city staff about the ordinance. We'll then open the public hearing, and that'll be a time for anyone who wanted to speak on that topic to come up. Once we open the public hearing, you can state your name. You've got three minutes to speak to the commission with any questions or concerns on the recreational vehicle storage ordinance amendment. But I'll let Justin start with the intro.
Thank you. So this item was brought forth at the August 10th Planning Commission meeting for consideration after review by the ordinance review committee. Essentially, it was noted in some of the neighborhoods that there are some, obviously we have some pretty narrow lots in Ferndale, some situations where driveways are pretty close to the neighbor next door, pretty close to the home on the existing lot. And there was some concern about primarily large recreational vehicles being located right next to, you know, either the existing home or the home adjacent to it, and that being sort of a fire emergency issue with people trying to get out of, say, the back of a house and running up the driveway to get out and being blocked by a large recreational vehicle or fire spreading from one driveway to the next. So staff brought forth an initial ordinance amendment. Planning Commission gave some feedback as to providing more details regarding, you know, how the existing ordinance works right now, definitions. And then we, so we went back, talked to the ordinance review committee, talked to city attorney, and then came up with a little bit, hopefully a clearer ordinance that achieves what was requested. So the existing ordinance for recreational vehicles allows motor ho, motor homes to be stored in driveways located in the side yard. So there was a question, I think, at the previous meeting on, you know, there are two side yards. Are they permitted in both? No, they're, the, motor homes are only located, allowed to be located if there's hard or pervious, or impervious concrete, asphalt, or pavers. And that's often closer than home standards allow. As Commissioner Williamson mentioned earlier, the current setback is for five feet. Michigan Building Code requires three feet, or, excuse me, five feet, but three feet if there is fire-rated construction on, say, a garage or something like that. But the city's ordinance is still five feet at this time. So really, the, the primary goal is to just prevent large recreational vehicles from being stored and parked where there's not that adequate access for emergency. And as far as a safety perspective, and then also from an aesthetic perspective. So I only got, I only received one call regarding the item. I don't know, it doesn't look like that person's probably here, but they were, just wanted some clarification. But essentially, recreational vehicles would still be allowed to be stored in a driveway that's, that's paved for two weeks if that edge of the driveway is not less than three feet from the neighbor. So kind of just providing that additional separation that was requested by the fire department. There's also a clarified definition of, definition of stored, to mean closed and not occupied for accessible use, so people aren't living in their driveway. And then storage would still be permitted in the rear yard, provided there is some concrete or some sort of solid surface back there. If Planning Commission moves forward with this, they would go forth to city council for a public hearing there as well.
Thank you for that update. We will now open the public hearing on the update to the recreational vehicle ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak or ask any questions of the Planning Commission on this ordinance, you have three minutes. Come on up to the podium and state your name. We'll open that public hearing at 6:52. Anyone here to speak on the public vehicles, or recreational vehicle storage? All right, we shall close that public hearing at 6:52. And would be looking for a motion, or well, I guess, any questions to staff?
So through the chair, I was, I, we had a lot of questions last time it came in front of me, and I didn't really understand the purpose of this besides someone thinking, "Oh, God, the guy down the street has a motor home, and I don't like the way it looks." I don't know, I don't know what's promulgating or bringing about the change of the amendment. If it's an individual, we haven't had any, and we asked last time, "What's the fire safety concern specifically? Can we talk to the fire chief? Can he tell us why it's any more dangerous than parking a car there?" Are we just picking on citizens with this that have motor homes? Are we creating additional policing requirements that we go out and measure? Is it three feet from the fence? Is it five feet from the fence? I don't know if it's really serving the citizens to just change this because what I really think is at the heart of it is this aesthetic idea that's kind of tagged in there.
I mean, it's, sorry, Justin.
So at the end of it, I guess, two questions for you. Did we find out the specific safety concerns that are specific to parking a motor home there, which seemed to be the basis of coming forward with this textual amendment? Why are we doing it? Is there citizens that are asking for it, or is it something internal to the city? And those would be the two main questions that I have.
Yeah. So it is a combination of both, I would say, but there have been resident complaints from both. But the fire marshal did kind of provide an opinion that primarily because of when it, when a large motor home is very tight on a, on a driveway that's very narrow, if there's trying to escape from the back of the house, back of the yard, something's obstructed up front, from the front of the house, it would be very tough for someone to kind of squeeze through and, and affect the ability of the fire department to, you know, put out a fire, essentially. So I can't say the total number of complaints. I know that, you know, I've heard at least five myself this year just about that. Whether there's been an increase in RV purchases in Ferndale, I can't, can't really say. But, but, so it is, like you said, it is, it is a combination of safety and aesthetic, primarily safety from the fire marshal's concern. And the other, I forget what your second question was.
It was just where were the, I guess, the push for change, where was it coming from? Was it internal to the city or external to citizens? And if we had any written complaints, emails, or letters, or anything along those lines that kind of gave the initiative to make this textual amendment?
Phone, phone calls to me and then from a councilperson, they, they received some face-to-face comments and phone calls, I believe. But I haven't received any letters or emails myself.
Did the fire, did, have we, do we have any understanding of, you know, is this a prolific thing throughout the city? We've got mobile homes on every other house that's creating this fire hazard. And a second, second question to that is, how is the hazard any different than having a large van or car parked in the driveway?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Prolific, I couldn't, couldn't say. I don't have a count for, because I don't think that they're registered in the city, but... Yeah, as far as counts, we don't have that. But code enforcement, I mean, they've seen, they've had some instances where they have caught, I guess, caught people essentially living in, in their driveways, and that's, that's one of the, been, one of the primary concerns. As far as difference of a large Yukon compared to a motor home, you know, I think the fire marshal's response was, you know, they both are, are an issue, but a recreational vehicle is something that they can, is something that's less prolific but could have an impact. And then his suggestion, which I agree with, was to, you know, provide a sixty, you know, sixty-day window from when this ordinance is enacted for people. If, if they do have something they've stored in their yard for years that they, you know, could seek a storage facility or something like that, or seek amenity, or improvements to the rear yard to put the RV in the, in the rear yard.
For sake of clarity, there's some things in here that I just wanted to touch base on. In kind of the summary leading into this zoning amendment, it's discussing driveway in the side yard, but then in some of the actual texts that's being amended, it's just referring to the driveway. So I guess when you're down into the general provisions and number four, where am I?
Four C or four?
Yeah, something four. A4? I don't know. The first one with the text is actually amended. It just says, "May be parked on a driveway," as long as it's not that distance. But it's talking specifically there about the side yard is kind of what it looked like from the summary leading into it. So there's no mention of the side yard versus that, the rear yard. So that is one thing I kind of noticed on there. There's not a consistent use of the term motorized home versus mo, motor home versus mobile home. So just some clarity of maybe the consistency and that, whatever that terminology is. And there is, once again, a little bit of a confusion on, you can store, you may park a recreational vehicle, but on a driveway that's not less than three feet from the side lot line? Is that the driveway or is that the vehicle? And one section is talking about, it doesn't specifically say, but it actually has where the edge of the driveway is not less than three feet. Another location is where the recreational vehicle is not less than three feet. So maybe some clarity of. And then you kind of get into that tricky situation where your driveway goes up to the lot line, but in the rear yard, you're actually going to, you could be 10 feet away from a property boundary. So you're still getting that clearance that you're looking for, but the driveway itself is not three feet. So just making sure it's clear that if it is intended to be the recreational vehicle, that that's what it is. So I don't know if any of that, it wasn't really in a logical flow there, but a number of those, just the clarity of the text for me.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, in the definitions section, 24-460, it says motorized home. So I think we would just clean that up. So instead of motor home and mobile home, we would just make that motorized. I'm just, I'm just picking the easiest one first.
And then for, you actually have two Cs here now, so I guess bumping up all those letters, but unless those are intended to be combined. But, so that'd be for the, for the B, if we're talking about on a driveway in a side yard, just to clarify that, if that's the actual intention, based on the summary leading into it.
Yeah, that should be.
And I just want to also say that it looks to me that this is actually increasing the opportunity to store your motorized home on your property, whereas before it wasn't allowed. So I don't think it's necessarily only taking something like, you know, an opportunity that was existing. I think, you know, to park your vehicle for two weeks every six months, now you can actually store the vehicle on your property, whereas before it looks like that was prohibited. So I think there is, actually, I think it's taking both sides on that.
Yeah. I think in the ordinance review committee talked about, should it be allowed in the rear yard at all? And they wanted to provide some relief, and they felt that between them and the fire marshal, that if it was in the rear yard, it alleviates that side of the house issue. But, but yeah, I see your point.
So are we clear on Commissioner Goring's direction?
Is it intended to be three feet from the vehicle or the driveway is one thing I'd really like to, I guess, if we're going for the changes to clarify it, just-
I think driveway is the easier, probably more way to be consistent.
If somebody has a driveway to a lot line, a side yard, side lot line, but they have a large paved space in their backyard, they can no longer, they cannot store or park their vehicle. I guess they could, and here, the way it's written for the first C, they would not be able to park their recreational vehicle there.
Right.
Even though it's maintaining all of the distance from structures and other things like that.
Right. May, may be parked, but if it is, if the driveway is two feet from the side yard, they wouldn't, they would not be able to, be able to park there.
If the driveway is two feet from the side-
I mean, at least that's the way it's written right now.
Intended to be more towards the vehicle.
Yeah.
Is my understanding, especially since that's how the old text was written, the previous, like the existing text, I should say, that says no closer. It's, it's talking about the recreational vehicle itself, but the new text is referring to the driveway.
That rules out most homes in Ferndale, otherwise.
There's a lot of driveways within three feet.
Right on the, right on the huts, yeah.
So I mean, I, I think, the way, you're right, though. I think the way, the way that it is written, it should be, it's more about how wide is that vehicle-
The recreational vehicle.
Rather than the driveway, yeah.
So that is relevant to B and C in four, yes?
Yes.
I have another, actually, just for sake of clarification. For some reason, I read this one really closely, so I have a lot of things to say.
Hold on one more. Oh, sorry, hold on a second. Barb, are you kind of getting these, or Justin, are you making notes?
I'm making notes, and I can read them off once we're-
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. And so for that new C, that's following the motor homes, or motorized homes that cannot be parked for more than two weeks in a six-month period, these recreational vehicles may be parked there, but there's no restriction on timeframe. So is that essentially saying those recreational vehicles that are not motorized homes can be parked there indefinitely? I know, I know that the next one is referring to storage.
Right.
But, you know, I guess I'm just making that explicit.
I think I said-
An explicit based on the follow of the-
Yeah, I think that's, that's differentiating parking and storage.
Mm-hmm, right.
That, that if you are, are, I think what this is supposed to be saying is, number one, you can't park a recreational vehicle at any time if it's, if it's closer than three feet to the lot line. And then the next follow-up point is meant to say you can store it, it's okay to store it, but it can't be closer than three feet from the lot line.
But the, the definition of stored now is saying that it's closed and not occupied or accessible for use.
Right.
Whereas parked, you can use it. So if you have a pop-up camper, you can park it there and use it indefinitely. And that's not considered stored if you have it accessible.
Well, you're ruling out B, though, which says that they can be parked.
That's specific for motorized homes. I'm thinking more in terms of, sorry to cut you off.
No, it's a good point. Then again, for recreational, otherwise, I mean, what's, what's the issue? Like if there's an ATV that's sitting there?
I'd say, I mean, a trailer, so it's not a motorized home, a pop-up camper, that now can be parked there indefinitely.
Would it be a motor home or a mobile home on the definition?
Nope, because that does not have the internal-
Okay, I agree. That should also be clarified, because I think the intent here is that-
It's definitely the intent.
You, it's okay for someone to maybe have a family member stop by and stay in a motor home for a few days, maybe a week, at most two weeks. But beyond that, they don't want it to be open and people to be in it.
Right.
So that would have to be a tent, a pop-up tent camper. It would have to be a motor home. It'd have to be a mobile home.
They have a separate definition for, here for folding tent trailer.
So we would add folding tent trailer and pickup camper.
Right. Get the catch.
Are we comfortable, given the amount of both text changes and questions regarding intent that have come up moving forward in voting on this?
I actually would like to raise an additional issue related to the.
Please.
I, I, I'm still not comfortable with the broad definition of recreational vehicle here, because I think this is designed to address what we were just talking about, mobile homes, motor homes, pop-up campers, things like that. But our recreational vehicle definition also includes kayaks and canoes. I, I question whether we need to put this type of a limitation on a kayak to say that someone can't have a kayak stuck behind their garage because it's within three feet of the lot line. I think what would make sense here would be to maybe, maybe pull the whole boats out of the recreational vehicle definition and have that done separately or else carve that out, because kayaks and canoes are not large. Through the chair to Justin, uh, is, is there a restriction on people storing like a pile of bricks or a motorcycle or something next to the lot line?
Pile of bricks, I think, falls under some sort of code enforcement violation.
Just can't be sitting on the ground, trust me.
Right, yeah.
Doesn't matter where it is, related to the lot.
I mean, I guess the issue I had here is what if someone has a wood fence in the back and they want to throw a couple hooks on it and hang their kayaks on the back fence?
Yeah.
I feel like that should be permissible.
Yeah.
But under this ordinance, with this definition, it's not.
So you would rather see the original or the new C say motorized homes, pickup camper and fold-up tent trailer instead of just overall recreational vehicles?
I think so, because, uh, you know, at the same time, I can see why you wouldn't want to have a boat trailer within three feet of the lot line either.
Right.
There just needs to be, to be a carve out there for something like a canoe or smaller, some like, or, or we just take canoes and, and personal watercraft out of the recreational vehicle definition. I, I just don't feel like we reached that level. I mean, it could, maybe it's just me, but we're talking about big boats that need to be carried on a trailer, we're talking about camper, we're talking about things that are significantly larger.
So we could take out, um, because boats and boat trailers includes boats, personal watercraft, canoes, rafts and the normal equipment to transport them. We could take personal watercraft, canoes, rafts out of that and just make its own definition.
Or even just take canoes out and add another sentence saying something like, uh, um, standard-sized canoes or kayaks are not considered recreational vehicles.
Do they need a, do they need a definition though? Do they need, like, is there some other definition then that they fall under? Or are you creating a hole then where people have those items and then there's no, nothing to address with them?
That's a good point. If they're, if they're addressed elsewhere in the ordinance and there are other, uh, code sections that would apply to them, then it's possible. Maybe just for purposes of section, whatever the new section is. Or the section that we're talking about here, maybe the sense would have to say for purposes of section twenty-four dash two-two-two, uh, four, uh, canoes and kayaks will not be considered recreational vehicles.
Can they just be exempt technically? Is that, that's the category they fall under, right? They are a recreational vehicle?
Well, that, that's the subsection I just mentioned. That's the subsection that's specific to the storage requirement. So it would be exempting them only from the definition just for that subsection.
Yeah. You could, I mean, you could rewrite C to say recreational vehicles excluding standard-sized canoes and kayaks.
How would that better?
Well, through the chair. Each one of these sections has certain things that would fall into it that you would just with a gut reaction say, well, that's not what we're trying to restrict, such as a folding tent trailer. There's tent trailers that you can pull behind your bike, that you could hang on a fence that would be excluded here, and that's not what we're trying to do. And we're doing a great job of trying to refine this, but my concern is there's no initial problem. We're trying to solve a problem that doesn't really exist, except for, from my understanding, something doesn't like the way a trailer looks in a driveway. There's been no true fire concerns raised. There's been no, it's really, if we do something here, going to, you know, harm citizens, make them go out and spend money, um, with a, as we've seen, a statute here that's written very vaguely. I mean, I don't know if we're really, are we really doing anything? Are we solving any problems with this textual change? Where I'm at right now is we're not.
Yeah. I mean, the fire marshal's stance was that this would help eliminate safety concern he had. I can ask him what other, um, based on the, the feedback that you've all provided, you know, does this still help his concern? But I mean, that was a concern he had. It's more than just the aesthetic. It is, that is a piece of it, certainly, but.
Any other discussion from the table or questions for city staff?
Um, I, I would be interested in knowing what the fire marshal says, because, um, two things, they're large and boxy and they're probably more combustible than cars, um, from the base. Um, and, and if they were to be inhabited, they probably, they might have a heating element inside, which cars normally, they have engines, but they don't have something to turn on to heat stuff up. So from the fire perspective, I'd be interested in that, um, because the way the building code is written, you want that separation or you want to create it with the structure itself. So where does this fall as far as a flammable structure and larger thing than a, a regular vehicle that you turn on and drive? So that would be, um, I think the key for me to making this something we want to regulate.
All right. I don't sense that there is, um, a will to make a motion to pass this. Is there an interest in making a motion to table this? Or, Justin, would you prefer we take no action?
Um, whatever, whatever works.
I'd put the table this.
Think I know the comments.
To give the city opportunity to revisit the text and, uh, and the city could bring it back before planning commission, uh, when the city determines is appropriate to do so.
Yeah, there was a motion to table from Commissioner Williamson. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on that motion? I'm sorry, there was a second by, by Chairman Farr.
Yes, through the chair. If the city could let us know what it's truly trying to regulate with the ordinance, if we're trying to keep people from living in mobile homes next to houses in the driveway or what it is exactly, I think that will help us, um, assisting crafting the language exactly to meet what's intended. And if we could get an understanding of the affected people, uh, in the city that we're talking about that this, this ordinance change would affect.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, um, motion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote on this one then.
Azar?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Raisin?
Yes.
See, there was a "not" here. Uh, Farr?
Yes.
Goring?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion to table passes. And we will move to our next item, our, the first of the two discussion items, item number six A. This is, uh, related to six-two-four Livernoy Street, um, and a discussion of putting a second story on that building.
Thank you. I'll try and keep my comments. Yeah, I'll try and keep my comments brief, um, but Schneider and Smith Architects had some discussions about, um, potentially doing a second story addition at six-twenty-four Livernoy. Obviously, this is on Livernoy mixed, mixed-use too, uh, zone property, um, with our one single family to the east. It's currently a multi-use commercial, uh, building with some retail, um, a workshop, um, some buy appointment salons and jeweler there. So the initial proposal was to provide, um, three upper-level loft-style apartments on the rear of the building. The architect, uh, Jim Schneider's here to provide, uh, take you through some of the images. Initially, we just had some conversations about, um, shared-use parking, building materials, landscaping and expectations, um, but, um, kind of an exciting project that, uh, sort of fits, I think, what the original intent was back in two thousand and ten, I guess, for, uh, Livernoy, so. Jim?
Thank you, Justin. Welcome, Jim.
Uh, good evening. Jim Schneider, Schneider Smith Architects, uh, address is eight thirty-three South Center, Royal Oak, Michigan. And, uh, as Justin said, we took the time, he took the time to meet with us and, uh, we showed him some preliminary sketches of what we were anticipating. And he made us aware that you do have this opportunity for discussion before we go for a formal site plan. We thought that would be a great idea. As he said, we're proposing three loft apartments, which will be two-story lofts on top of this existing building. Mr. Bear, the owner, apologizes for not being here. He's had this building about twenty years. He's just had both knees replaced. I talked to him today and he was not feeling too well, so, um, that's the reason he couldn't be with us tonight. But, um, I'd be happy to answer, I, I think you've got a letter that kind of outlines all of the, the items that we were looking at, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you've got anything specific.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll start with, um, I guess my, my, my two questions have to do with, oh, I'll just go first. Questions have to do with, um, uh, the interaction with the neighbors to your east, I guess. So Long Farmdale?
Um, Mr. Bear was going to meet with them. I think he has tried to reach out to the neighbors to, to bring this to their attention, so.
The types of things we, um, have, the types of questions that we've gotten recently when multi-story developments have been proposed on Livernoy. So more in relation to Stratford Street than Farmdale. So the other side of Livernoy have to do with windows and balconies and what people should expect in terms of, you know, we've all been at about the same level before and now we're going up and is there anyone looking in my yard? So I wanted to.
Right.
Ask a little bit about some of the, the transom windows and other things that are designed into that east elevation.
We would have some windows on that facade. We would not have any balconies on that side of the building. I can find a.
And it looks like there are a few, a few existing windows on the back of that building.
Correct, there are. Let's see. This is basically the, the east elevation, so that elevation is the one that faces into the yards. So there, there are some windows there, but again, no balconies or anything like that. We are required to have some windows for fire egress and some things like that, too, and.
Just going to ask if they open.
Some, some, there are some daylight requirements in the code as well, so.
My other question has to do with shared parking. And I'm familiar with the building and I shop at one of the businesses in the building and.
Okay.
Have used that parking lot any number of times. And given the current uses in the building, I, I think that a shared parking situation would, would work just fine. They have a variety of hours, but the majority of them are open when residents aren't, aren't home. You know, that's sort of nine to five or nine to six type.
Right.
Type hours. But should the, um, should the uses in the building change or intensify, I don't know if the shared parking would be as easy to maintain. So let's say you, you know, in half, because I know it's also sort of a U-shaped, so let's say if half of that or if a couple of the suites were now suddenly a more intense use of restaurant or something, um, the, the shared parking could get tougher than with the, the uses that are there now. So I wondered if you had any, any thoughts on how that might be addressed?
I would suggest that, first of all, if it were to become a restaurant, that would require a change of use. That would have to come before this body. So I think you could have some input on that very question then. And actually, I think, assuming that any of the uses change from what they are currently, I believe they would have to come before the planning commission. So you could examine, I mean, you could change out retail for retail, but, um, you know, if you were, if you were changing the actual use of one of those spaces from what it is currently, I think the planning commission would have an opportunity to revisit that.
Perhaps. I mean, so Justin and I, we, we talked about this a little bit on Monday in terms of, um, what we might be able to do as a part of this, this conversation and any, um, accommodations for shared parking to make sure that something came back. But right now, an intensification of use that's already permitted and an MX two wouldn't necessarily need to come back.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it were to be a restaurant and the parking calculations did not net out, um, you know, it, it would have to come back for a parking waiver.
Before the restaurant would get their C of.
Right. But you could also blanket a condition that, you know, should uses change more than in the parking, you know, requirement is X percent off or this number of spaces off, you could make that a condition of approval for this. You could also, um, I mean, I, I think we, Jim and I talked a little bit about just making sure the signage is, you know, X hours for the three residential units or something like that.
Oh, yeah, I think that's the easiest way to.
Yep, yeah. But it, but yeah, an intensification use would have to come back.
Thank you. I think, sir, I want to make sure the applicant was aware of, you know, we're not, it's a, it's a mixed-use district.
Right.
A mixture of uses.
And, and, you know, Mr. Bear that owns the building, his, you know, he's got long-term tenants in there, so his intent is, you know, he's not going to, you know, do something that's going to affect his, his tenants. And, uh, you know, I think the residential's a, a great use above the property. Certainly, it's limited in terms of its intensity and, uh, its, its actual need for the parking. And the, the idea would be that, you know, they would designate three spots, you know, with a, with an hourly restriction on them for the residential, so.
I, I think it's great that the building can accommodate something above it, that it was built in that way. Any other questions from the table? Who wants to go next?
I would actually have a little bit of concern on the, uh, the balconies. And I would recommend thinking about raising the parapet wall around that balcony higher up towards the east side of the building, because I think the people, the perception of the residents to the east is going to be that anytime anyone's out on the balcony, they're just watching what's going on in, in the backyard. The residents are going to want to be a little bit more private.
Oh, I think I misunderstood the bal- are the balconies on the roof?
No, no, no.
No, they're on the side.
One faces south and one faces north, so they're, they're not on the back of the building, they're on the side of the building.
I understand what you're saying now, man.
They extend to the far east.
I understand what you're saying.
Edge of the, of the building, correct?
Right.
Correct.
So you can stand on the balcony and you could look over the edge there and.
I got it, yeah. Or flick your cigarette box or, yeah.
Right. But if, uh, if that wall was higher on the east side than it was on the west side, which is the side facing out to Livernoy.
Right.
Then you'd be giving those residents a little bit more privacy while still having the, the more open side of them facing out to the main street.
Sure, we can look at that. Currently, that wall's forty-two inches high, so we could raise it a little bit more. There is quite a bit of foliage out there, back there along that property line, too, that kind of screens currently the residents from the, from this use, but we can look at raising that. That's, I don't think that'd be an issue.
And I understand it's a cleaner look to have it the same all the way around. That's, uh, if you want to foster a good relationship with everyone around you.
Right.
Might be a small sacrifice.
Sure, no, no doubt.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Um, I, I, my concern is, is similar in nature with, uh, it's Farmdale back there and dissimilar to the west side, the lots are much smaller.
Better, yes.
And we have what appears to be, uh, living and dining, uh, space with windows looking into those backyards. I don't know if there's the ability to frost that glass or, um, something in that nature, but you're at a, um, pretty steep degree of elevation where you can look right into these backyards from your living room. And given the close proximity to that rear edge of the lot line, it, it just would seem that if I was living in that house that was directly behind you, I would feel the presence in, in the windows upon, upon my backyard, so.
The windows look pretty high, though. I mean, am I, am I looking at this?
Well, there is the, the mezzanine, kind of that, that second level there. So at that point, you'd be looking down through the window. Those camp windows on the, the bedrooms, two bedrooms.
Right, I'm looking at the east elevation here.
Up here?
If you look at the.
Those ones and then these ones, I think, are living dining room here.
Those are the ones that I was thinking are high.
Right.
Through the chair, I.
Yes.
I'm not as bothered by them. I, I think that when I look out my kitchen window, I see the house next to me and they see the bus. You know, there's a lot instances of just not having a lot of view all the way around, so, um, and these aren't like big picture windows, so I'm, I'm less bothered by that opportunity to see out that way. And I think it might be preferable than seeing a big blank wall. Agreed on the line. But, I mean, it's, it's higher, so you might have the perception of someone looking, but it just, I don't think it's as close to the structure as, um, because, I don't know.
Questions or comments?
Through the chair. I noticed that, I believe it said, separating this property from those parcels to the east from the parking lot is, I believe, a chain link fence with barbed wire, I think, on the top of it. So I just kind of wanted to have that as part of the discussion. If the wall, like, screening kind of comes into play, since this is from a non-residential district to a residential district, and since this is now changing the property, if that then kind of requires, I think it's a eight-foot wall, six-foot, eight-foot? It's actually not super clear from what I could look at it, whether it's a six or eight foot, because it's in a mixed-use district, but the, the table refers to uses such as commercial and other things like that. So just some clarity, I guess, from maybe Justin and the city, as well as any other discussion here as far as the screening requirements.
If it were a brand-new, hundred percent brand-new structure, it would be six to eight. It does say "commercial" in that portion of the text, but we include mixed use in that. That's what we, I think we would have required for Stuart Reed's property that we discussed, I think, earlier this year. So being that it is an adaptive reuse of an existing building, normally in the past, I don't think we would have required a brand-new wall. We could certainly require the barbed wire to be removed.
Is it adaptive reuse, though, or is it, like, you know, this is an additional construction, another two levels? So like, kind of where does that threshold gets cross, get crossed?
Yeah, I mean, it's really up to this body. I mean, it's, that's just what's been done in the past, but it really is up to this body. The planning commission has the ability to waive certain, certain requirements, like landscaping and screening.
What's the preference of the study, then? Uh, my preference is certainly on a bare minimum, get rid of the razor wire, but.
Right, a question of adaptive reuse versus?
Or on how much we would like to bring it into compliance? Thoughts in terms of screenings? We're adding more than half of the square footage of the existing building? So your sense is we should go further toward bringing it into compliance currently?
I would agree with that.
Do others agree?
Yeah.
Okay, in terms of screening with a wall, or is it wall or vegetation or just wall?
Concrete wall, concrete.
I'm not sure if that takes into account neighbors' preferences as well. But one, one thing I would mention about that, I mean, if what you're talking about is screening the parking, you're talking about from this edge to this edge. Right on this corner, this residence has a garage that's one point two feet off the property line. So I'm not sure realistically we could get a masonry wall or a concrete wall in there. What we, you know, what we can do is, we're proposing some new green space back here that isn't here now. We could certainly do some landscaping in those areas. And certainly, we can, you know, take the razor wire off the top of the fence.
I think it's barbed wire, but, you know.
Yeah. But I think it would be very difficult to try and get a wall of, you know, with the foundation in, with that garage as close as it is to the back of the property line.
Thoughts on screening accommodations?
What about a fence?
We could probably do like a, you know, a wood fence or something that was, you know, more post-related.
That's what I'm thinking. Short of a wall, I guess, because I understand you don't want to dig a footing right next to a garage that's a foot and a half away there, but taking a post hole in that.
If you look at this photo right here, you can see how much vegetation is.
Yeah, until somebody decides to not want mulberry, like, but, yeah.
Right.
Like DT.
Oh, yeah, DT, yeah.
Right.
Till those all go away.
But we can certainly do some landscaping and a fence along there.
Yes, I think something with like headlights and that sort of thing, especially with this being such a change of what the actual footprint of the building is, that feels like it'd be my preference.
Yeah, I would prefer to see a concrete wall there. I think you've got a little room on your own property that you could move it in. There is a foot and a half on the outside of your property, and then if you were inside your property line a little bit, I think it's, I, I don't know what the feasibility is, but it seems like it's feasible.
Well, once you move the wall in on your property, then part of your property is beyond the wall. So how do you maintain your property when it's on the other side of the wall, because you can't get to it, so.
Plus, if you provide a ability to, to plant a wall on the technical property of this building, say a case climbing up on the wall from the other side.
So I'm not a architect or a civil engineer, but my understanding is that most of those garages are built on a rat wall foundation without a two-and-a-half-foot bottom solid block layer. It's just a vertical wall.
Correct.
And then if you're building a four-to-five-to-six-foot wall, you'd be building something similar. Now, if it's a matter of cost, getting a ditch which to fit in there, to be able to dig your trench to set your wall, I mean, I think that's something we need to understand is, we, you're, I think a concrete wall solves our problem a lot, a lot better. And I think the concerns with headlights and stuff are valid. So I, in my opinion, I would like to see a more solid barrier. That's what it calls for. If, I just worry wood fences break down. You still get light that comes through, yeah.
Get vinyl.
And there's something that's more sturdy. There's something that's gonna be there for a long time.
Also right next to that dumpster, so.
Right, hit with the dump, the truck. So I don't, it doesn't seem like it's not feasible to put a cement wall there. And maybe behind the building is where I was more concerned about that issue, but.
Well, I'm assuming you wouldn't run it back there anyway, because you're just talking about at the property line where the parking is, so.
Park lot.
Yeah.
But again, with the distance to the garage, the difficulty is not so much undermining the garage as it is just getting equipment in there and being able to use it. The other thing is, you know, what kind of space do you create between that wall and that garage? Because currently, water or whatever can go either way. But, you know, you're gonna have this one-foot-wide little patch of land between that garage and that solid masonry wall. So, you know, in terms of drainage, maintenance, all those things, it's just a little more complicated. We can look at it.
So through the chair, you're saying you're creating a harder case for the garage owner to maintain that side of the garage, because you're just basically building almost up against their structure. So it's, it's more like you're making it harder on that property owner to maintain their garage.
That would be one of the concerns you have, because, you know, currently, if there's, you know, any drainage issues or anything, the water can come through the, you know, come through the fence as it drains off. That won't be the case if we put a solid wall there, so.
Do we know if there's a drainage issue?
Yeah, I don't understand how the drainage would be any difference. If there's a brick wall there, it's gonna run along the wall. You're dealing with the overhang from a garage that's probably pitched east to west as well. So your water runoff doesn't come there. Your gutters run on the north and south side of that garage, based on what I'm seeing on Google Maps, anyway.
Okay, well, we can take a look at it.
If those are concerns, then those would be things that we would, would wanna see.
Other questions, comments?
Through the chair, I'd just say, I think it's interesting development. I like seeing attention paid to this neighborhood and the city. And I like it, looking forward with it, solve all the minor issues that we're talking about now and keep the ball rolling.
Great, thank you.
Oh, through the chair. Design-wise, are you looking to make it look high-contrast to have this sitting on top of another building? Or are you going to work any of the materials together for a blend? Or is there any intent to upgrade the rest of the building?
It's, we're gonna, you know, our, our thinking right now is we're gonna contrast it somewhat. We're not gonna, the existing building is masonry. We're not gonna build this out of masonry, because it's, you know, weight issues, support issues, things like that. So this is gonna, you know, have more of a modern look to it. We're looking at, you know, metal panels of some type, something like that. So it'll definitely contrast with what's there, but, you know, not, the idea is to kind of bring them together, but contrast it in a way that's attractive and works.
Are there any mechanical units on that area that you'd be building over? You'd have to move rooftop items, anything that would appear?
We have not gotten down the, there, there is no mechanical heating equipment right now for that particular portion of the building on top of that roof. And, you know, we're still looking at what we'll do mechanical-wise, but obviously, our desire is not to put anything on the roof of this, and if we had to, we would screen it.
Okay, but there's not something large there now that you'd be moving?
No, not, not to the front of the building, no.
How would you, just curious, how would you deal with addresses or directions on how to access this?
Well, this'll have its own private entrance at the parking lot. It's got a stairwell. It's got a lobby at the first floor, so there'd be signage there indicating the entrance to the residence. Plus, it would offer, you know, some sort of secured entry at that point. And then, you know, I'm not quite sure how they'll ultimately number these, but there'll be some sort of addressing. We'll actually have to deal with the post office on some of that, how they choose to address it.
Wondering how you sign the back door?
Yeah.
And one more question is, meters, where would they go and what do you expect to put on this?
You know, again, not really sure yet. The, the gas meter's currently on the south side of the building. The electric is, is basically on the east side of the building. So again, I'm not sure exactly how that'll all work out as we develop the plans, but we'll certainly address it, so it's not, you know, an eyesore.
Is there any other lighting, exterior lighting that you're proposing?
No, no, nothing other than, you know, just the lighting on the units themselves. We're not adding any exterior lighting to the building. There'll be a light, for instance, as you come out on each of the terraces off the units, there'll be a light for that, but that would be it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Great.
Any, any last questions for us?
No, no, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Great, we can move on. I covered up my agenda. To our last item of the evening, discussion item six B related to a potential planned unit development at Pinecrest and West Eight Mile with Pinecrest Holdings. Justin, let's use it first.
Sure, if you guys wanna set up the easels, that's totally fine, or we can set them on top of the TVs. Okay. Great, so I'll just give a brief intro, but Pinecrest Holdings is back. They were before this body, earlier this year in April, just to talk about initial concept plans for a portion of the Hayes-Lemmer site. So this is directly south of the Ferndale High School, Middle School, and football field just adjacent to Detroit Axle along Pinecrest. So this is sort of phase one of the project. A lot of what you'll see was what was discussed at the April meeting, and the guys have some updates from that perspective. But essentially, the applicants are here for preliminary PUD discussion. So just as a refresher, you know, there is no vote taken, but generally, trying to get specific information on, you know, things that you think you would wanna see as part of an official site plan and PUD submittal. There would be a public hearing after an official submittal was put together and brought to the planning commission, and then in the end, it is council's decision. This, there's not been a PUD agreement officially put together yet, but since there's been a few months since applicants were here, they wanted to come and just provide some updates. So at that April meeting, there's a lot of direction about stormwater detention, appropriate Pinecrest frontage, should there be buildings facing Pinecrest? You know, what kind of issues are there as part of that consideration? And then if there's any consideration for connections to the adjacent neighborhood and then Ferndale schools. So plans have been updated, but still ninety single-family detached units, three-to-four-bedroom units, and then kind of typical designs with front porches and two-car garages, targeted to support families. This project would be seeking brownfield redevelopment incentives just due to the historic contamination on the site. The applicants can kind of get into more of that. But a PUD is essentially being proposed because rezoning would be required. The top parcel is zone R1, but the bottom larger parcel is zone M1. This project, phase one, would only be using a portion of that. And then some of the proposed setbacks are a little bit, front setback is a little bit closer to the street. So there's, some deviations would be from the R1 front setback, I believe the rear setback as well. So I'll let the guys, Craig Singer and Dennis Griffin and company, kind of give some more details, but I'm happy to answer other questions as well.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah, so you can zoom in there.
Welcome.
I'm Craig Singer with Milford Singer and Company, and this is Dennis Griffin, my partners with CG Emerson and John Brieza with First Holding. As a group, we've been collectively involved with residential developments in many cities, and we're looking forward to doing our first residential project in Ferndale. We are excited to present our plan for this first phase of this PUD we call HL Series One, which is the western completion of Fielding and Northway Streets. Our goal is not to create Pinecrest Manor subdivision, but a seamless completion of these two streets as if they were done seventy or eighty years ago. Our site will require an extensive environmental remediation to transform this once-industrial site to meet current residential standards. We will be proposing a brownfield plan in the near future. The completion of Fielding and Northway Streets will be done with ninety new homes. These homes will be designed specifically for this site in Ferndale, with many floor plan and exterior elevation choices. Our hope is to provide an option for growing families who need larger homes to stay in Ferndale. All homes will have large usable front porches and garages in the back of the homes that are either detached or attached with a side entry. We are proposing no basements, but instead, large, open bonus space above the garage and covered outdoor entertainment areas. Our PUD Series One also includes the completion of the Pinecrest streetscape all the way to Eight Mile, along with the extension of water main and public utilities along Eight Mile to establish the perimeter of the Series Two land as ready for development. We understand the risk we are taking by not proposing a site plan for Series Two now, but understand we will ultimately propose a development consistent with the master plan and will seek your approval at a later time. We are here tonight to answer any questions and to present the revisions that we have made in the plans since our last meeting as we seek PUD approval.
Thank you. And since we last met, boy, have we done PUD approval. Justin and I were talking on Monday and I said, oh, my goodness, we've now gone through, through two. And it's, you know, this, this is a great tool that's been on the books for a while, but given the state of the economy, really hadn't, we hadn't flexed that PUD muscle. But we have now twice since April, which is great, but which means we have questions we didn't have in April. So looking at our, our PUD ordinance, and one of the ways that we've discussed these projects is they often layer rezonings, which have their own requirements. Sometimes there's some other special land use requirements, and then, of course, then there's PUD requirements. The, the way that I've found useful is to go through and to look at those requirements, to take each of those motions on their own as you, as you go through the process more formally. So, sort of where I started. So looking back here at our, at our PUD ordinance, I've got a list of twelve, twelve criteria, which certainly no one meets all twelve. But I did want to make sure that we talked about a lot of them tonight, because as currently proposed, I've got a number of questions as to why this fits into a PUD. Number one in our list of PUD requirements is the preservation of significant natural features. In this case, trees are the main natural feature on this site. So I wondered if you would talk a little bit about, you, you talk in the letter about protecting nat- about protecting natural features, um, particularly around the perimeter of the property, including many of the mature trees. And I wonder if you would talk a little bit about how trees factor into this site?
Certainly. Well, first of all, on Pinecrest, there's a fifty-foot easement area, and, uh, there are many trees within that easement area, which we will attempt to protect as many as possible. We don't expect, uh, that there is really any contamination in that area. So, that is, uh, one of the benefits of protecting that area. Around the very perimeter, uh, the northern and western perimeter, there are also many large trees in areas that, uh, we also believe have no environmental contamination, that we will also be attempting to preserve. And then we have a, a large swath that is technically not part of this PUD, but is a buffer area between the residential and the, the industrial building to the south. And that area, we believe, will be able to preserve all of those trees, which are large mature trees. The rest of the site is so highly contaminated that even if we tried to, uh, like route utilities and construction in a manner, to, in a manner to preserve as many trees as possible, the remediation is going to require, uh, most of those trees to be gone. But it's really the perimeter that we think we'll be able to save.
If you determine, if, if it was determined that, um, contamination had leached toward Pinecrest and, and was in that, that fifty-foot easement, um, do those trees need to come out? Is that on you? Is that on the city? What's the?
Well, yes.
There's certainly a lot of stories and maybe a few urban myths.
I, I think that, uh,
About that property.
I, I, I think that the type of contamination, we know, isn't the, it's, is not the kind of contamination that is, is leaching.
Okay.
Uh, it, it is buried materials.
Yes.
It was a glass plant and, and, uh, they made other things there that they would dig a hole and bury debris. So, it's, um, uh, it's pretty self-contained.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, there is some level of groundwater contamination, which is why we do not plan to build basements. But the good news is, while you don't sort of clean the groundwater on day one, as all of this, uh, debris is removed, then it stops the rain and the trickle down into, uh, the wa, the groundwater.
Are the, are the trees helping with remediation at this point?
No.
Any other questions about?
I mean, they're actually not helping because they're sort of in the way of.
Preventing the excavation?
Right.
Any questions about natural features and trees, please?
I mean, not preserving them, but are, are you capping the site? And can you then go and plant trees? Or are you capping it where you don't really want to dig down into it?
No, no, this will be fully remediated and, and be able to.
So, you can go and plant a tree and hopefully it gets big someday?
Yes, our, our plan is to, to plant lots of trees.
Okay.
We're proposing, uh, trees between the streets and sidewalks and, you know, throughout the development and all over. We've also, since our last meeting, we eliminated the, uh, the detention basin, you know, and went with all underground as requested.
Any other questions on trees and natural features? When we get to a site plan, I'm going to want to see a lot more information about who's being preserved where and how.
Yeah, I guess, through the chair.
Are there perimeter fences? You, how are we, how are we keeping these trees?
About the natural features, though, um, if, is this, this is preliminary PUD discussion, so if you're looking through the PUD requirements, um, in that, I know this isn't, I don't know how far we've gone along that process, but it does, um, indicate that we should have, like, uh, something showing the general locations and approximate size of natural features of the site. And it's something I couldn't quite piece together from the pack as is, so, um, just to, yes, complete that natural features discussion.
My next point, uh, is in relation to a complementary mixture of uses. Um, I mean, we're building single-family homes, we're a city of single-family homes. We know we need things that aren't single-family homes. Not that there isn't a case to be made for single-family homes, but the, the types of housing that have been identified as missing in Ferndale aren't necessarily single-family homes. So, within that, that realm of single-family homes, I wanted to ask just questions about two different ways that we might create a complementary mixture within the site. A comple- complementary mixture of residents through some affordability programs, as well as, um, some barrier-free construction, if at all possible. So, um, and barrier-free doesn't necessarily always need to mean aging in place, although it can. And Ferndale and, and Pleasant Ridge, in particular, have, really have a, a dearth of ranch style and/or barrier-free, even if they're multi-story homes. So, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about whether it's families moving up or, you know, empty nesters moving down, but still wanting to make sure that they've got the room for the kids and the grandkids to come and stay. You know, they're not ready for the twelve hundred square foot yet, they still want the, the two thousand. How we can get some complementary mix in this big city of single-family homes?
Sure.
Well, uh, uh, the market that we had identified with our brokers and different analysis that, that we've done is primarily the move-up buyer as a sort of a large segment that seems to be leaving Ferndale, large families, growing families that are ready for larger homes. And, uh, and in meeting with the superintendent of the school district, who has since left, but prior to his departure, you know, that was a pretty exciting prospect for him because so many high school-aged families, uh, are leaving the district. So, um, you know, that was, that was the primary purpose of, of what we're doing. The other thing that we are faced with is between our land cost and remediation cost, it's a very expensive development and it sort of limits the idea of the lower end of the market. These are probably, uh, hundred thousand dollar lots by the time we're done.
Sure.
So, it sort of limits greatly the, the smaller homes and, uh, you know, puts that a little bit out of reach, but not impossible.
I guess I wasn't even talking about smaller homes. I was thinking, if, you, you've got ninety homes that you're building, you've got the ability to spread some costs so that you have a handful that are more affordable. The city council, I know, has been discussing, has really prioritized an inclusive housing ordinance and affordability.
Yeah, you know, so, uh, Justin mentioned to me, like, where would affordable housing fit in? And I'm not sure where affordable housing fits in on for-sale product, but I'm open to any suggestions. And most communities, affordable housing is sort of, uh, is sort of dealt, you know, more rapidly in the rental market, where you can just have an adjustment in rental rates, you know, for median income and below. And, you know, it's an easy identifiable, I don't really know of any communities that have a for, affordable, uh, housing for-sale ordinance in Michigan, but I, I'm, I'm open to however you might suggest doing that. I know that in Aspen, they have affordable housing as part of for-sale projects, where they have auctions and, you know, for locals that are discounted pricing and, but it's a complicated, difficult process. If you have such, if you create something, we're open to it.
I think they're well on their way to creating something. The city of Detroit also recently created something. If it doesn't cover for-sale, I'd be surprised. And I'm, I'm personally on the board of a housing foundation that, that builds and finds ways to make affordable to people. And I'm not talking necessarily in the thirty percent of AMI space here, but in sort of like the hundred percent or eighty percent of AMI space. You know, family homes, you know, where you, again, sort of spread the cost around. So, I think there are a lot of ways to, to approach it. I don't know if there are any other thoughts from the table at the moment, but it's something for you to be aware of, council's thinking about. It's going to come up when you go to the Brownfield Board, it's going to come up when you come back here.
Right.
So.
We think about it too, so I, I welcome suggestions. As far as, you, you know, um, uh, like ADA compliance or, um, barrier-free or, uh, it, it, you know, that, that is something that's sort of easier for us or easy.
People will pay a premium for often.
Yeah, and, and we do, we do create that in our plans. We do have, uh, houses, even these houses, where we have the ability to do first-floor masters, you know, and, and adopt them for that and, and have done that. So, you know, these floor plans will lend themselves to barrier-free and especially without basements and what have you. And, and by the way, we wouldn't, we, we absolutely would consider and will design homes that will be for sort of moved-down, smaller, possibly ranches. You know, again, it's a, a premium price when you talk about ranches, but we will have that as an option and would love it.
Any other questions on, we're talking about complementary mixture of uses and how we might achieve that in this single-family environment?
Through the chair. It would be great if you guys could come up with some ideas on affordable, affordable housing cures as well. I, I mean, at the end of the day, when the city just does it, then you're like, man, the city just came in. They're telling us what affordable housing is and how to do it. And we need it. It's, it's obviously something that's been talked about a lot at the Planning Commission and, and the city level. So, if you guys have ideas of how to make houses for families affordable, um, because, you know, not everybody wants to rent an apartment for their whole family, um, that would be great. We would look for that from you guys with this PUD because some of the other things is, how does it help the city to give you this PUD? And if you brought, you know, a percentage or houses that you were going to allocate to a way to make them affordable, that would be great, that would be helpful for us.
Questions or comments on mixture of uses? Any strong feeling that, that you want to see additional or different mixture of use? I know that there would be a phase two to this, just to the south, that as a full parcel helps to address.
Are you working through like the, the twelve?
I am, I'm on, I'm on number two.
Yep, I might have some more comments a little bit later.
Okay. In terms of sustainable building and site design, um, obviously this is a major remediation project. Certainly has that going for it. Any other comments or questions there? I'll look into Epicrasta and then we get to. Open space and greenways, so here's a, here's a question about Pinecrest home orientation. Is it that the twelve-county drain prevents you from orienting homes toward Pinecrest? Like they are?
No.
And as they were built seven years, eight years ago, or?
No.
Because that, to me, the thing that makes this not feel like it's community-focused and integrated with the rest of the neighborhood is that you don't have houses oriented toward Pinecrest.
You know, we, we, we discussed that in our last meeting and then, and there wasn't really a consensus. We can do it either way. We, in our meeting with staff and with Michelle Foster at the time, you know, we talked about doing it both ways. The, the issue with, with, um, having them face Pinecrest, it's a, we wind up with the same number of lots.
Okay.
It's, that's not the issue. The issue is, is that that easement area is fifty feet.
Okay.
So, by the time you take the fifty feet and then, you know, a twenty-foot, you know, front yard setback, something like that, and you're seventy feet off the road, it really sort of looks not very inviting.
Okay.
It looks like you're really pushing things back. So, I think that you're going to have, you're, it, it, either way, you're going to have that question. We did, uh.
Justin, is there a way to find out, so the, the houses on that side of Pinecrest are set further back than the ones on the east side anyway? Is there a way to find out what some of those setbacks are as you get up toward Hazelhurst and LeRoy?
We can provide an average and.
Because that, that might help settle this, this question of, of is it going to look like you're on an estate set way back, or is it going to look relatively similar?
Yeah, through the chair, this might be answered by Justin as well. Um, if it is a fifty-foot fight of way, or, you know, uh, easement, do you have to have an additional twenty feet beyond that? Or, um, since it is an easement, can you have the setback overlap an easement?
Well, other than.
So, it would only be fifty instead of seventy.
We're proposing that that whole fifty feet be a public greenway.
Right.
So, we're really proposing a, you know, a large public space.
That makes sense.
So, you have to set back the home, well, you know, when, when we're talking about setbacks of the houses within the area, we're talking about from the sidewalk. And if we're, you know, so it's even further from the street. So, the, it, just one of the things that we talked about is having the, on Pinecrest, having the side elevations look more like a front elevation. And we did.
Oh, like big side porches or?
We did sort of.
Thank you.
Have something like that, just as an example drawn up, so. So, you can see that we're thinking about it. And this is just one example, but I, I think that we could make the side elevations look very homely and inviting, you know, um, in addition. But, but we aren't opposed to orienting the houses to face Pinecrest either.
Well, and, and I'm just one voice on this commission, so I'm wondering, do others feel strongly?
Through the chair, I, I remember a lot of conversations saying that we would prefer it facing forward and, um, the orientation of the houses goes all the way up to six ninety-six, basically. Their, their setback that are, there's probably some, a couple.
Except for the new construction at Oak Ridge, yeah.
Right. Um, so, it, it's not out of character and I, I really personally prefer the houses facing and, um, I, I think it would give us a different kind of quality or character to not have that. I'm thinking of areas where, where divisions are set up like this and they're not as, or.
That's how you make it not feel like Pinecrest Manor.
So, if it's not a difference of, um, number of lots and the design works well, I think it would fit very well if it, if it kept the rhythm of the, um, current street.
Through the chair, I'm in agreement with that. If you go, you know, I, if you go up and down Pinecrest, you can look at, look at it on Google Maps or Google Earth. You can drive up and down Pinecrest, on that side of Pinecrest, all of the homes are set substantially back from, uh, the road compared with, uh, the homes on the, uh, east side of the street. That's just the way the west side of Pinecrest is, so I, I don't think having those homes set further back would, would strike anyone as unusual at all as a Ferndale resident or spent any time in that area.
That does, though, impact then, um, open space and greenways. So, there was the attempt, you know, to, in the spirit of the PUD, put in an, an open space or a greenway connector in that, um.
We are going to have driveways going through, right?
Right, so we would, we'd lose that contiguous sort of lack of curb-cut pedestrian area from, well, from Eight Mile or from wherever the south development might happen up to the high school. Is that a, a trade-off that we're comfortable with? And then, I guess we'd need to talk about making sure we allow them to meet their open space requirements in other ways.
Make sure you also don't affect the trees.
Certainly. Some, some, some that are still in the easement, not necessarily.
Yeah, that, that you've got trees, it's like twelve homes then that would have driveways that are coming through that area versus none.
Yeah, it's gonna, it, I, you know, the, the issue that, that, that you face and that we face is the trade-off of this, uh, you know, beautiful connector area, landscape, greenway and just a sidewalk with houses in front. So, you know, we've always said that we can do it either way and, um, and, and we're being honest about that. I think it's just having a consensus of how you want it done in terms of what you think is best for the community. You know, we thought that when we weighed the difference between, uh, you know, I think that, that, that we're going to spend a bunch of money to make the side elevations look like front elevations and not get anything for that. But we thought that we were giving, like, a really big, uh, greenway, you know, that doesn't, isn't interrupted with. But we thought that we were giving like a really big greenway, you know, that doesn't, isn't interrupted with a bunch of development. So, you know, but we can go either way.
I guess the hardest part for me is without knowing exactly where the trees are that would or wouldn't be impacted, it's hard for me to be able to say. You know, I'm I'm willing to give up 10% more trees, 20% more trees, 100% more trees in order to face these houses out. Because if you've got an easement that you're that you're not touching and you say that there are trees in that easement that wouldn't, that wouldn't change as you put the the multi-use path in. And we know that driveways and other excavation would impact them in some ways, but what is that? It's the same conversation we had with Robertson Brothers, you know, like is there a way around any of these, some of these, none of these? And that it's just, I, yeah, that's what makes this recommendation challenging.
Yeah, through the chair, I guess I'm also looking at this greenway and open space and easement combination. I'm kind of curious, as part of landscaping and like the sidewalk kind of requirements in the city, there would be a sidewalk going in here either way. So there is going to be a north-south connection on the west side of the.
Yes.
Of Pinecrest. And to the south, once you hit Eight Mile, there's no crossing across Eight Mile, so it's not a continuation in that direction. So it is, it is filling that sidewalk gap, but that's something that would be occurring regardless of what type of development goes in there. And if we're talking about a P U D and then considering this, the open space, I I kind of start to hesitate because it's already an easement that's going to remain open space.
Agreed.
It 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 it's not a, it's not an an easement, like a permitted use easement. It's not as if like it's a right of way and you own it. We we own that property. The easement is 50 feet in for utilities. It's an underground easement.
Right, so that's.
So we are, we are really proposing taking 50 feet of property and turning it into essentially a public right of way.
But would it be otherwise buildable?
No.
No, right.
Yeah, and that's through the chair. That's kind of what I was kind of getting at is this is a stretch of land that already is not buildable. It's not. And it can't be used for that kind of purpose. And there will be a pathway through the sidewalk connecting. So for me, I kind of start to get a little bit hesitant to see that as kind of getting that open space requirement when we're talking 10%. I know the this whole piece is kind of talked about as close to 20 acres. From what I could tell, you also have elicited or it's listed as 18.21 acres with 16.79 being for the residential and 1.42 for greenway. And that's including that entire strip from where it hits the high school property down to Eight Mile. So as far as kind of getting to the intent of that open space, thinking about a planned unit development, it's kind of thinking, okay, if there are natural features that are worth saving elsewhere on the site, if there's, you know, this number of houses coming in, if there are parks and open space for the larger community, excuse me. And the fact that it's already property that's cannot be developed and there will be a through weight connection for pedestrians, I start to get a little hesitant of seeing that as fulfilling that portion of the P U D.
Oh, so you're looking at your.
I mean, I agree with everything that Mr. Garrett has said. I'm thinking the same thing. There's already going to be a sidewalk there. We need to talk at some point about crosswalks at that and how they're going to fit in there, but. Going back to the orientation of the units, since there is going to be a sidewalk and there is going to be that open space regardless, having an entire district that is seemingly cut off from the rest of the community, I just don't see, I I just don't see how there there's any benefit to not reorienting the houses because to to preserve something that's not going to be lost either way. And while I I appreciate that you think you've put some thought and effort into what you can do to the side elevations of the houses, the fact is that these side elevations look like the side of a house. They don't, they don't look like the front of the house. And I can understand why you wouldn't want to go to the expense of putting a giant side porch on the house. It it it's still going to be the side of the house, but having this whole, this whole little section here where you you're already set back, but then you're looking at the sides of the houses instead of looking at the fronts of the houses like you have all the way up and down Pinecrest, it it just really, to me, cuts off the whole development from the rest of the community. And it's going to make residents that are right around there probably view the residents that are moving into that community a little bit more coldly and with a little bit more suspicion. It's just not going to foster an integration of this development into the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yeah, comments? I think we're also getting into now transition areas from adjacent land uses on this particular point, which is next.
So through the chair, my my preference as well, just to quickly clear that up, would be that the units would be orientated towards Pinecrest. I I think that's the better plan. I think it it just fits that neighborhood characteristic better. I guess I don't know if it would fall under the transitions, but two things really quick. The number of houses that you would put on Pinecrest, what is that? And then the connectivity to this this additional south space, south, would there, I mean, there's no connectivity between this planned unit development and what you're going to put to the south, as I can see, that's never going to change.
We're we're proposing as part of this P U D, the, actually, I don't know, it's on here too, right?
Yeah.
But the. We're proposing as part of this, the the completion of that connector area in that greenway all the way to Eight Mile. So the bottom, the bottom portion, you can see Pinecrest going to Eight Mile. You see the match line?
You were thinking behind the houses.
I was thinking for vehicle traffic, there, I mean, my thing is you're putting 90 units in and there's two entrances and exits, and then you're going to put another development in south of it that is just going to be totally separate and unconnected, unlike a neighborhood in my opinion. Just wondering if that was considered access, putting 90 people in and out through only two entrances and exits on the Pinecrest.
Yeah, no, we we purposely didn't want it to be connected because we think it's ultimately different kinds of uses. You know, this we viewed as just strictly single family and thought that the two access points was sufficient for that number of homes. There was a a earlier plan where it was one street and it looped around.
Right.
And and, you know, we changed it to two curb cuts.
But our grid system connects different uses all over the city.
Right.
Through the chair, what's the, the difference in proposed use to the south? Were you thinking of putting apartment buildings?
We think that it could be a whole collection of different uses, anywhere from multifamily to, you know, to office, to retail, to, you know, a collection of different uses. We we just didn't see where an interior connection was necessarily, you know, verse of vehicular connection as opposed to pedestrian connection was something that was was desirable, considering that there's the street right there.
So we just talked about.
I mean, I almost think of like Orchard Lake Road when you, you know, and that sort of connection road that if if you're familiar with it, that is like off the street as opposed to.
I'm familiar with that, but when I think of Orchard Lake Road, I also don't think of Ferndale.
No, I'm just saying as an example, having like a vehicular connection when you're right adjacent to a a street.
So we we talked about this a little bit with the the Wilson School property, and there was a a reorientation of streets both to accommodate some DPW related questions and access, but also to make sure we were connected to the street grid. And I think this is a, it's a great point, Josh, you know, it's the, the spaces where you have dead end streets or little pockets like this in Ferndale are are pretty limited. You have some more little court streets. It's not that they don't exist. They're they're just relatively limited. So, Justin, can you go back to the the prior picture? You know, without a connection. Something coming through or, I I don't know, you're you're now.
Well, that's an industrial building that we don't own.
This is Detroit Axle?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
You can see there's a little line right there that that's our, that's our.
Them?
To the right of you, right there, yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
But you're right. We could, we could have a connection going, going through the middle of that property somewhere. I mean, it would just be a a stubbed dead end at this point.
I just think when you.
Would it benefit the?
Right, through the chair, I mean, if we're looking at developments to the south, the integration of property, the idea of community, these people are cut off to a certain degree. As I mentioned to Commissioner Baker, it seems, I think about trick or treaters, you know, and you're in this little pocket and then you're, it 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 just seems isolated. And if you were going to build a, whether it's an apartment complex or whatever to the south, I don't think that it should be cordoned off from an apartment complex. I think the integration of the neighborhoods is very good, you know, for the for the city. So I would think that a connector street or access to whatever is going to be south, whatever it may be, would be, should be considered. I mean, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but.
Yeah, I think I agree with that as well. I mean, even, I'm not sure how wide the parcel is. I was looking at here, I don't know, is it 1,400, I mean, 1,200 meters or 150 meters? Or is that part of some of the description of it? That seems a little large, actually.
About, it's about that, it's about 700 feet from Pinecrest to.
700 feet?
To American Axle.
Yeah, okay, so that gets to be 700 feet to the parcel boundary of the American.
Correct.
So then we're talking close to 1,000 feet without a separate block. So, yeah, that is a pretty long block when you put it in those kind of terms. And especially with unknown uses to the south, when we're looking at the transition to adjacent land uses, that'd be a a big concern for me that there's nothing connecting through.
Through the chair, you could just leaving, you know, without necessarily stubbing out roadway there, but maybe just leaving one of the the parcels open until you determine like over over near that edge there where the side of the American Axle property start. Leaving one of those parcels open and setting a building on that right away until you know what's going to go into the south, so you have the option of either pushing the roadway down through there or doing an enhanced pedestrian walkway down into an area that could be more of a retail and entertainment district. And then you give the residents of this neighborhood quick and easy access to that. Might be something to consider. And and that wouldn't require any building of anything additional at this point, just kind of, just not building on one parcel until you have got a better idea of what you're going to put in on the south.
And Pasadena down here, are there any streets up here or are we are are we all houses straight against the football field now?
All houses.
Those are all houses.
Just off the northwest corner, there's like an alley or something. But it's off, it's north of it.
So a connection, another connection through if we, you know, pretend we weren't two cities comes to the south from here.
Yeah, that actually, through the chair, that brings up the question I had about that transition to adjacent areas as well. Is the multiple conflict points of having the streets not aligned as a straight intersection versus kind of offset like that? So you started to have some of those kind of funky interactions when people are turning in different directions and the fact that those streets don't line up. I mean, I know that exists throughout the city and all over the place, but.
Pinecrest specifically is every street.
So I guess the question would be, do we want to maintain the character of Pinecrest or do we want to realign something?
I mean, the character of making it difficult to cross or?
I'm with you.
Yeah.
That's not Pinecrest, right?
Yeah, just asking the question.
From a public safety perspective, I know.
They did it deliberately.
Those are multiple points of conflict instead of, you know, these two are head to head, crossing Pinecrest. And it kind of would give you the more options of where you're crossing as a pedestrian. You know, we're, on here, I think there's only one crossing of Pinecrest as it's drawn as far as the pedestrian crossing. I know you could have another one for the, the North Street is Fielding or.
Yeah, our expectation on the greenway was it was going to be sort of collaborative, how how you guys wanted it, but but.
Justin, or through the chair to Justin about the city's preference about street alignments?
Um, I think initially, we we talked about it both ways. Then we kind of settled on Pinecrest was kind of designed offset like this. We saw that, you know, at Fielding there, that's probably a good area for maybe a bike repair station or something that connects with the bike route to the east on Fielding. But I think initially our thought was keep it offset because of just the existing character.
But if we if we align the houses facing Pinecrest, you'd be able to kind of adjust that street a little bit easier, right?
Either way, we can adjust the street. It it, you know, the 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 two things that that we that we get out of not having them aligned and from a dimensionality standpoint is that it works better in terms of.
There's lot, yeah.
You know, we're starting at a fixed line at the high school. So we basically just use up less land. We keep a much larger area between the homes and the existing industrial plant, which is really built right up to, you know, to that rear area.
Yeah.
And then we also sort of leave that that Royal Oak Township stub road contiguous contiguous to open space for some sort of future connection if you ever wanted one, as opposed to having it in dead end into the side of a home. When we bring it down to connect those roads, we lose that. But again, that's not a, it's not a money issue with us. That's really sort of a design issue. You know, there's all of these quirky things in Ferndale. Eventually, if you take them all away, then it is just like a subdivision. And, you know, we really liked, we embraced the quirkiness, but but we can, we can adjust that if if you wanted it adjusted.
If there was a compelling public safety reason to continue to talk about it, I'd be interested in it, but I guess I'd look to the city staff for that level of research. I don't know that. I I personally feel strongly that it needs to, I I don't personally feel strongly it's change.
Through the chair, I, what what comes to mind to me would be more, rather than reorienting the streets, would be putting some attention and focus on getting some good crosswalks over here.
Yeah.
Since there will be.
Place bike lanes.
Something going up and down on both sides, sidewalk on both sides going up and down. And you do have, obviously, a school right there, so a lot of students running around here. We have, if you look at the south side of the parking lot for the school, you've got, the school has got sidewalk that runs all the way down those tennis courts and then basically stops at the top of this parcel. If there could be sidewalk taken from where that sidewalk stops over along that edge of the parking lot to connect up with the sidewalk that then goes south on the side of the road there. And that's some type of enhanced crossing area there at that corner.
You're talking about the east side of the sidewalks?
The street that goes through those is Fielding, so that's probably where you want, because Northways a a court, Fox is is a little shorty one with a court that comes off of it. I mean, I think if you if you want to do a a crosswalk, because the high school also does have a sidewalk that continues to go straight up, so it would link up with the high, the high school sidewalk. But you're thinking.
They're not in the southern portion of the whole parking lot.
The sidewalk on the southern portion of the sidewalk?
Parking lot doesn't have a sidewalk. The sidewalk is pushed in to go along the tennis courts.
And. To avoid the car, pedestrian, beautiful pedestrian conflict, I think.
And if I can just add to, Pinecrest is scheduled to be resurfaced in 2019, so it's really perfect timing to.
Picks up up here.
You know, new crosswalks, bike lanes are proposed to look wider and things like that. So, I mean, this is really good timing to affect this property that's been vacant for a while.
I'm corrected.
I'm correct.
I I am corrected. No, I, yeah, thank you, Ian.
Something, we had a a really good discussion when we were here. It's been a long time since April and we, the orientation, we spent a lot of time discussing it. And I would just like to offer just consider this plan as advanced together as something that could be viable. And the reason I say that. And the reason I say that is because our, our look at this parcel is exactly where you guys are going with it. That it is inclusive and it's set up for connectivity. And it's set up in a multiple different ways for connectivity. We look at this parcel as a component and, you know, the extension, if you will, of Fielding and Northway, as Craig said. But there's also some very interesting opportunities with Fielding and making that connection over to Livernoy. You know, we saw the plans coming through, and that's one of the really inspirations for a lot of developers and residents and others to get down into this area of Ferndale. Ferndale is very, very unique in that it's got multiple interactive cities within cities, even with its small size. So, when we looked at the kind of offset and the opportunity to start connecting other neighborhoods into more of a linear path, we learned a lot from Blake when he talked about his students when they're jumping out and heading up to Nine Mile. You know, he'd like to see them, you know, over time heading down to, you know, a better development near Eight Mile. You know, literally to keep people closer to his campus. It's a long ways away from them to go. So, when we were looking at that and that Greenway connector, it's not specific in our mind just to this development. It's specific to the entire area, where we see people getting on their activated, crossing the streets like you talked about. Pinecrest is a major artery in and out, and it's a gateway, and it can be slow and beautiful and activated. So there's an opportunity, we believe, you know, at the Fielding intersection and others to make those connections, like Justin said. You know, the bike repair station, we put one on a building that we have at Walcott and Woodward Heights in collaboration with the city. It changed the character over there. You know, people were investigating the space. They're, they're using it as a wayfinding point. So it was kind of interesting how those little interactive nodes can be put together. The idea of multiple driveways facing Pinecrest is very interesting and appealing, but I'd just like to keep it consideration if we, as we present and work on that Greenway together, it may be better to have that space be for everyone and a little less interrupted. You know, it can be done either way, but just wanna keep an open mind on what that space means for literally one of the longest stretches we have in the city to activate and make multiple perpendicular intersections with it. And so when we're thinking of the site, the things, the other future connectors, you see, we did move it up where Pasadena potentially could get connected. Not right now, it's probably not time. You know, the idea of, you know, keeping a lot for interactive move down, that may make a lot of sense, and this may be so wildly successful and a gem of the community. Maybe the next phase is, you know, another row of housing in a similar or a different stock. So that can make a lot of sense for an interior connection. Some of the other uses that have come to us, and it's one of the reasons we don't have a specific PUD plan for the balance of it, is we've worked with Justin and Jordan and Michelle when she was here to establish the next south piece as ready for development. The calls that come into your planning department and your economic development department are numerous, and we're, we're benefiting from those type of calls. So we think it's a great asset to have that ready for, you know, some of the diverse housing calls that have come to us for people out of state that have made really wonderful communities for, you know, age-appropriate, whatever else it may be. Housing, appropriate commercial, whatever it might be. So, that's a long-winded way to, I just wanna keep an open mind on what that important stretch looks like. It'll probably take a couple of times to, to interact with it. And just think about what it means for the rest of the neighborhoods to get them in one spot where they're consolidated and moving in a, in a cohesive way. It's happened on Woodward Heights. You know, we see it now where people are walking and biking and, you know, pushing strollers, and two years ago, they weren't over there. You know, people are meandering around.
They didn't have anywhere to go either. Now there's destinations.
There's destinations, and it's, um, you know, people are curious, one, to start out, and then, you know, they wanna be safe, they wanna be helpful, they wanna be active. So, you know, it's, so it's a wonderful opportunity, and your, your thoughts are, we, we've worked them all through our minds. So we just wanna just consider, you know, multiple stabs at what that connector along Pinecrest looks like.
Through the chair, I mean, I think we're all willing to consider multiple stabs of what that may look like, but thus far, this is all we've ever seen. And when we had this conversation last time, I think everyone up here, or the majority of the people up here, said that we'd like to at least consider what it might look like to reorient some of these parcels, and you're not seeing it. We're hearing you tell us we would consider reorienting, but-
You'll see it, we will show it, we'll bring both next time. It'll be the, I mean, what we would propose is virtually the identical plan, but there'll be twelve houses facing Pinecrest with twelve driveways. You know, and, 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 and there'll be, you know, a, a deep setback. From a sales standpoint, those will be twelve, like, premium lots because they'll be so set back. That, that's how I had it originally, and my connectivity partner was, thought that, that this was-
And this would stab, you as far as?
I understand, it's a, it's a trade-off, it's a trade-off.
It is a trade-off.
And you'd have at least eight driveways, I don't know that you'd have twelve driveways, 'cause you've got, you've got from other sides two to talk about. I mean, do you have a, a set of long driveways coming up, or did one, two, three, four of them come off of-
Including the roadways.
Your side streets?
So-
Right, why can't one of them come?
I, I, I think, my, my understanding of how this eventually comes and actually exists within the community, you can look at Livernoy, which is different in many ways, but you have the sides of houses, so you don't have the interaction with the street. When you go north on Pinecrest and you have the front of houses and you have driveways, you have more interaction, there's just more life going on on the street, 'cause we don't live in our side yard as much as we live in our front yard. And when you break up the street with driveways, there's curb cuts, but you've got interaction there. It slows things down, in my opinion. And I could be wrong, in my opinion, of course, but I think it brings life to Pinecrest. And where I grew up at Royal Oak, there was a school similar to this, and it's gone now, but they've changed it and it's all houses there, and it's a much slower thoroughfare because there's interaction there. And when you've got this blank slate, I mean, understanding that we're talking about the Greenway, but what does it do to the street as well? And we wanna interact it too, and that's where I'm coming from when I'm thinking houses on Pinecrest are beneficial to the community area there and integrating everything, more so than sides of houses and no driveways, so.
And, and driveways that are set fifty feet back from the street are very different than the driveways that you've got along Pinecrest or Farmdale that are this short, and I can't see you coming in that when I'm-
Yeah, these people will-
When I'm walking past, you know, so this is-
These people will all be able to leave their driveway facing forward.
Yeah.
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 So that won't be a problem, you won't have people backing into Pinecrest.
That's gonna be a big benefit of that garage.
No question.
Yep, absolutely. Big safety benefit. We've gone through, I'm looking at six and seven, which are points that I brought up about affordable housing and diversification of housing types. Was there, were there any other comments in those areas, please?
I was kinda saving some of my diversity of housing types-
Great.
-that we got there.
Thank you.
It's sort of the mixture of uses. You know, as a PUD and an R1, I guess we're also talking about the M1, so I'm not exactly sure how that one is handled, but it allows for up to twenty percent of the housing to be of, you know, attached, single-family or multiple-family housing. So I think at that point, you get to have, when we're talking about a greater variety of design, a mixture of housing types. I do think, you know, three and four-bedroom houses in Ferndale, that's, there's not a lot of those around. But then it's going to be this monolithic block of a certain type of housing. Whereas, you know, all throughout Ferndale, there are some sections where it is, every house is pretty much, you know, from Sears back in the day, but.
The Dills.
Yeah. But it's, you know, that, there's a lot of locations where you'll have a house like that next to Two Storey Colonial, where you'll have, you know, some other bungalow nearby. It's a diversity of those housing types. And, you know, if we're increasing the number of houses with three and four bedrooms, I think that's an outstanding addition to the housing stock. But I think there are opportunities, especially if, you know, we're having all this discussion of how do we keep this green space open on Pinecrest when you don't wanna have a driveway there. If there's some townhouses there, it can open up to that as a front, it's its front door, but the driveways could be elsewhere. There's, there's other opportunities for orientation, and I know, you know, a lot of people, developers, wonder putting in a, a big block of housing, like to have a similar type of housing throughout.
What, that, that's, we don't have that problem.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're open.
For our discussion, I, I think that's something that, when I'm looking at a PUD and we're talking about mixture of diversity of housing, this really opens up a lot of opportunities in that location, so.
Yeah, I would echo that. I think the availability of space here lends itself to, I'll often refer back to Lewis in a street I used to live on, and you know, every third house is like a duplex or something else, and then it's single-family, single-family, and it's this really mixture of community that makes, makes Ferndale. So, I, I, I'm not putting words into your mouth, but hopefully echoing what you said with that.
And so, yeah, I guess I think it can be creativity in the design and how the whole site is laid out, as well as the diversity of housing stock, and I think that could add a lot to the community of Ferndale.
Any other comments on diversification of housing, please? Thanks, Beth. Preservation, preservation of historical buildings or site features? Well, our building's already gone, and that had nothing to do with you guys. Site features, we've talked about trees, anything else? Anything we wanna talk about in terms of site features, the site features? Just to keep it going, talking about improvements to the street system to mitigate traffic impacts. And other potential public facility improvements to mitigate impacts of development. We've talked about stormwater issues, obviously that, that's going to be an improvement in and of itself, things will be retained and dealt with appropriately on the site. There's clearly significant infrastructure investment that's going to happen to, in terms of internal circulation here in the street system. You know, we did just talk a little bit about connections to give other exit and entrance and circulation points within the site and to the south. Other comments on what you would be interested in seeing or feels important for the developers to think about as a public infrastructure improvements?
Intern, in internal connector street, I, I, I don't know, it just seems like we discussed earlier, a very long block, unbroken, obviously the max, I, I, it seems long to me, but I don't know, something to think about.
You're saying like, in the, in the?
Yeah, I, I don't, what's the comparison to an average city block? I mean, are, are we looking at an extremely-
Oh, we're, we're talking about twenty, a twenty-five-house-long block. I'd say it's a pretty small block.
Yeah, it's like twenty, yeah, it's not, yeah, I didn't get that sentence.
I was trying to count houses.
I guess it's, it's getting back to my previous comment about how the streets don't align, but I do think that it's an important discussion from the public safety, just to get that opinion, especially if, excuse me, resurfacing and striping of Pinecrest, if you're talking bike lanes or some other opportunities there. I don't know if that means the turn lane is disappearing or not, but when you have the turn lane disappear with the offset streets, those conflicts are gonna be a lot greater. I know from my experience, having previously lived on west side of Pinecrest and driving to the east side a lot, turn lane was a, like a haven, it was like a little oasis for me, 'cause I could get across one side, but I couldn't get across that other side. And you have to use that to, just to get across. So I think to, if, if we are looking at reorienting that streetscape, this could compound a problem. And I'm not saying that is the solution, that they have to be shifted down, but this is part of that larger discussion with the public, or public safety.
No questions? All right, almost there. Pedestrian and transit-oriented development. Obviously, we've just talked about a, a major trade-off conversation about green space, about uninterrupted connections in that potential along, along Pinecrest. The internal circulation, so I, again, only being able to imagine what's gonna come to the south of this, I, I think about, and granted, these aren't necessarily single-family, but, but residential next to large commercial developments that I've seen in other cities. And I, I don't often see people actually walking from the residential to the commercial, because you're often building a really car-oriented commercial. You know, like, I think, like, up in Troy, there's a giant pile of townhouses and everyone drives to Target. So, whatever's going in to the south, I think we're going to be talking again about pedestrian connectivity and pedestrian-oriented development in terms of the circulation for the much broader, the much broader sites, and if they serve and speak to each other.
Just, when we do it, because I'm already sort of noting that we will keep the green space open.
Yeah, please.
Would you be doing, you know, we're talking about from here to here, would you want it, like, more in the middle, more further from Pinecrest, closer to Pinecrest? It, it, it's really just gonna be an open stuff, so if we do it, what, what do you see as the best approach?
My gut tells me mid-block circulation in order to, like, allow cars the best visibility as they're, but I, that's also just because that's what I'm used to seeing. You know, it's what's up at Fox and Shasta, it's sort of mid-block, and it punches in.
It's hard to predict the future on that. Through the chair, it's hard, it's hard to say from our perspective. It really would depend on what goes down there. And so I think, obviously, flexibility in where that might end up might be the best way. I don't know how you would indicate that in a, in agreement with a, you know, a PUD-type site plan, but, you know, it might make sense in the middle of, or it might make sense further west, depending on what, what ultimately is decided for down there.
Or to connect to Pasadena.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that grid connection, which then knocks out a corner and impacts those trees in the buffer to the south, you know, that's another internal circulator. I don't know enough about safety and visibility. I'd be really interested to see, 'cause I know we just had this discussion about alleys near the parking structure. Does the police department have a, a position or some advice that they can give? Do you want pedestrians moving near the back of a major industrial, you know, by Detroit Axle? Would you? If cars came this way, is that good or bad for pedestrians? If cars came this way, you've got pedestrians walking, is that good or bad? In terms of sightlines, safety, people being able to see pedestrians or people coming in from other areas, I don't know.
Through the chair, I just think it's really hard to tell without knowing what's down, and I'll be guessing, so. If there's a way to do a placeholder or the intent of finding a connection, but without knowing what it is.
Certainly understanding a lot of connectivity along Pinecrest.
We'll propose something.
All right, in terms of the coordinated development of multiple assembled small parcels, does it really apply here? We've got two very large parcels, and obviously they're coordinating the development of some. And we talked about site contamination, so I think, or through the qualifying conditions, there are other requirements in terms of open space and green space. Any other comments, questions, or requests of the developers for more information?
I had a quick question. Did we ever figure out what that path was? When we, when we were here in April, there was that, like, angled roadway path, we were trying to figure it out, if it went anywhere.
I don't recall that.
Oh, yeah!
We were discussing that, I remember, I don't know if it fell afterwards, but we were wondering if people were using it or what it was for.
The one that was internal to the site?
Yeah.
I don't know that it's relevant.
You're, you're looking like at an aerial?
Yeah. I don't think, it's not very important or-
Yeah, I think it was on the north, there was a utility-
Northwest part of the parcel.
Jumping through a gate and cutting across there, 'cause it was a locked gate, the entire site has been, you know, fenced in for a long, long time. So it was the one that's kind of going northwest inside. I think it's somebody who was servicing some utility poles.
Okay.
That's what it looks like to me.
There's a big temporary question on that, I think, Jason. It's, through the chair. There's a big temporary question on that, Jason. Um, it's through the chair, basements, are they just not an option? I know slab homes aren't the most desirable, so.
Yeah, but they won't be, they won't, well, we have done slab houses in Plymouth that worked out fine with this bonus space over the garage. But I, I think our preference is to do crawl spaces and, uh, and, and we are going to build a spec home in the neighborhood just to have as a model, uh, that we're going to do a crawl as well. We could do basements. Um, I don't want to have contact with the groundwater. And, you know, and, uh, basements have sump pumps and they get below the water table and it's just, it's more my requirement than, uh, it can be done, it's not hazardous. I just believe that, uh, that in this instance, I, I think safety is sort of first and I just want to avoid it. So, I'm willing to take whatever risk there is that the market isn't going to accept not having a basement, just to not allow people to have contact.
And given the history of the site, I mean, if you're, if you're moving up from within Ferndale or Pleasant Ridge, um, it, it, you, you also don't want to have contact with whatever's below the surface. I mean, I, I don't think it detracts from.
To this site, as far as I'm concerned, anybody that has a sump pump in Ferndale likely should never touch the water or come in contact with it, but people don't understand that. So, I'm maybe, this might be overkill, but given the fact that I know the condition, I'm just not going to put anybody in that position. So, it, it's sort of my issue. Um, I, I, having said that.
It's not just your issue.
Having said that, um, I, I had a similar kind of a site that I inherited in, in downtown Plymouth. And, uh, the market had, was, jumped on, oh, sorry, jumped on this bonus space over the garage in lieu of a basement. And interestingly enough, everybody bought into it.
Yeah.
As, as storage space and every, uh, it, this was twenty-two houses or, uh, all but one person finished it as living space. So, you know, they, it, it, they thought of it as being storage and ended up with, you know, I'm not sure how they use it. They might have just had me finish it and use it for storage, but it was finished.
Um, through the chair, I, I just want to go back to the initial question and then all the diligence and great mythology, methodity? Methodology, thank you, of going through all the points, but the question was why a PUD and show, how does it help the city to make this a PUD? Because if it's R1 and you can build R1 houses, do the work and, and, you know, we spent the time going through it, but come back and show us why this should be a PUD. And what really makes the case? So, that's what I would ask for next time around, because we don't want to pull it out of you or make suggestions, but, you know, let's, a little bit back and forth.
It wasn't really presented as a case. It was in discussion with the city and a big part of it was the connectors. And what's the like mechanism for the rest of it? Because at thirty-four acres, it's a massive site. So, it was kind of like Craig said when he came up, it's risky for us to not just seek a straight rezone. Because now, you know, this is phase one of a PUD with the next one is literally ready for development. So, that infrastructure component is put in and everyone is going to participate in the next phase of it. A straight rezone, rezoning of one half of the component, um, with likely a, seeking a variance for front yard setback and maybe some rear yard setback, that's a possibility. And the PUD was, you know, following staff's recommendation to, you know, have this be a, you know, interactive process for such an important site.
Sure, no, we haven't thrown it out, but.
We view this as one, you know, thirty-four acre site and we're just presenting, you know, but I understand it. It's complicated the way we're presenting it by not presenting all thirty-four acres of a mixed-use PUD, even though ultimately we sort of all know it's going to become a mixed-use PUD.
Well, and candidly, I wondered if we should wait to see all of the thirty-four acres of a mixed-use PUD. Um, you know, I, I know that it's, it's a very difficult site to develop, so I was, I'm very willing to talk about it in, in two pieces, but.
It, it, the, the market, you know, we have a, a, a strong market and, uh, the, you know, this is something I don't think the city ever imagined that the site could become a single-family residential, uh, piece. And, and, um, I think that it is such a community benefit that it is worth doing in two phases, but we don't have uses for the, the rest.
Understood.
And who knows what the market will be like when we have uses and present the rest. I mean, you know, we, we all take that risk and, you know, we, we think that it's worth, we're willing to take the risk that whatever it is that gets developed on the rest of this will be something that the, that the city embraces. This is the easy part. Normally, I would want to be presenting this with the complicated, you know, more dense, difficult part on Eight Mile. And that would, this would be the part that you love, I would think. So, we're presenting this piece first without the benefit of loading up the, the rest.
Completely, completely understood. And, and I think we're with you, um, in terms of thinking about this as two quasi standalone pieces, but the the, the importance, I, I asked Justin, I said, why aren't we just doing a rezoning? You know, the, the, I think the, the important opportunity to, to think about in the, in the PUD is that, um, that, that integration and, and flexibility um, to bring things to the city that we don't have already. So, the, I, I, I'm in favor of, of, you know, it being a PUD because it gives the city more flexibility, frankly. You know, you guys may decide you're in favor of a rezoning because you, you know, more control, so it's.
Started, we started with a, a rezoning and I think, you know, we, we could go back to a rezoning and, but I, I don't think it's, that it is the best approach. I sort of bought into what was suggested that, that this is the best approach to, um, you know, in how we're proposing it.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair, just based on what you're looking for as far as your setbacks for these properties, I certainly wouldn't assume that you could just have this rezoned and not just go to the zoning board and get variances for every one of these properties with what you're looking for with this project. I can almost guarantee you that would not happen. So, I, I don't, you can, as long as you want to tweak the setbacks the way that you're proposing to do, I don't think you have that choice but to do this as a PUD.
And, uh, through the chair, it's, it's more about just proposing what you can. And, and you've heard what we've said and what the options are, so, um, if, if you've got any, anything that can answer to some of the points we made, that'd be great.
Yeah, a lot.
Other final questions or comments from the table? Other final questions or comments from you guys?
Through the chair, I have one final question, I guess.
Yeah.
It's about the natural features. I know I've mentioned that, I didn't see like a, a map of natural features on the site. I don't know if there's been any investigation of whether there are wetlands now on the site after the time.
There aren't, but yes, we did do a, and, and, and I think that we have some sort of tree map as well, so.
Okay, yeah, I, I imagine you would from all the other work, so.
It's been a while, but I think we do.
Great.
We do from your side survey.
Part of that question, so.
Thanks, Beth.
Through the chair, just as far as a procedural question, is this the initial discussion phase of the PUD or is this a pre-that discussion? Because I know, um, it's pretty much a three-step process and this is to Justin if he can.
Yeah, is the next thing we're going to see is a PUD plan or are we doing this one more time?
This was meant to be the preliminary PUD discussion, so the next step would be a public hearing if, um, if you're feeling like this is a PUD-worthy project, then I think that we have enough, I think homework that we can direct. I could go through some, what the major underlined items on my list of, of what seemed to be the consensus, but I think, I think there's enough that we can go back, make some changes and come back for that public hearing. But, yeah, we had, we had, earlier discussion was just discussion in April and this is the, I guess, whatever item that is in the PUD ordinance, but the preliminary PUD discussion.
So, I know we want to move things forward and I don't want to, a repeat of our, our first, our first outing.
We've learned so much.
Which involved, um, sort of multiple tiers of public hearings because we kept bringing back revisions to a PUD that had been presented. So, I guess I would ask if, and I, I realize there's supposed to be preliminary PUD, PUD council, but if it turns out that there is enough alteration to this, that you think that it, that we need a preliminary PUD discussion do-over so that we are very confident when it goes to the public hearing, that, that this board gets it, that
Yeah.
the public is well noticed. I, because what I don't want to happen is that now the developer's coming back and, you know, efficiency in public hearings, I guess, I'm looking for.
I agree. I think, I think everybody over here would agree, so, um, if it, if it looks like it's worthy of coming back for another discussion, then we will.
Because we got far enough along, and you know what, you know, I, I do honestly love public input, um, but we got far enough along, you know, with the TAF site that it was getting confusing and there'd be too many iterations and it's, I think we've learned a lot from that one. So, if there's enough change, I guess I would just look to you guys in order, you know, in terms of managing the process for the developer. Do we need, you know, part due of this before we get public hearing and then ideally public hearing at council and then they're done, so.
Yeah, I mean, there was a lot of discussion tonight, a good discussion about trade-offs.
Yeah.
And so.
Just so they're not going through for public hearings.
Right, right.
Okay.
Through the chair, I'm also imagining that public, if you haven't engaged them already, are going to question any homes or
Why am I just hearing about it now?
A hundred eighty people in cars coming out right next to the high school and worrying about traffic patterns and safety and all of that. So, looking at that in advance of a public hearing, having thirty? Or having.
Makes sense.
Having information about that in advance?
I mean, as part of PUDs, you can require traffic studies and so, I mean, this would make sense.
The public and letting them hear about it and having a open session, whatever, so that some of those answers are put out well in advance of a public hearing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and through the chairs, this real clarity about, like, I keep saying the natural features, but I know a lot of people think of this as like Ferndale's great wild wilderness, even though it's not accessible. Um, the, the, uh, the real justification of this, like, you know, the contamination of soil, um, the, the need to actually remediate that. I think that's going to have to be a very clear portion of this discussion as well moving forward. So, that's why I keep asking, do you have this map? Is this something that you have? And as part of, if we're thinking of today as a preliminary PUD discussion, that's one of those components that we're supposed to have, so.
So, would you like me to go through just my list of what seem to be the reoccurring themes? Um, so. Sure, yes, and I'll obviously share this with you too. So, natural features, clarity on what trees will remain, which, which ones will not. Which we, we require that part of our start plan anyway, but, um, affordable housing potential, what are the options there? Um, there's potential for ADA and universal design in some of those units. Regarding the Pine Crest facing lots, seemed like consensus was face it, like the rest of Pine Crest facing, uh, east, I guess. Coordinate with our 2019 repaving, consider, uh, crosswalks and then if intersections should be aligned. And maybe that just means just fielding just because of its connection east, but we can, we can evaluate that. A potential connection to phase two, whether that be auto or, um, pedestrian and bike. Checking on the average front setbacks from the rest of the, the existing buildings on Pine Crest. Deciding if there's an opportunity for utilizing that twenty percent carve-out in the PUD for two-family or multifamily. And then a traffic study.
About the offset streets?
Right.
I, I don't want to interrupt, but there's some major decisive factors that we're questioning here. I, I really think that if we go to a public hearing right from here. Okay, that's what I, yeah. I mean, we don't have a lot of the stuff that we're supposed to have for the preliminary PUD discussion, so I think we, I would want that before coming in front of the public with.
I think, yeah, I mean, reading off the list, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Through the chair, are you, are you done with the list there?
Uh, yes, but let me know what I missed.
I just, um, just that kind of discussion of considering existing easement that's not developable as the ten percent open space. Uh, kind of, kind of getting that requirement taken care of through that existing location.
Kind of like a double dip.
Yeah, it's kind of, it feels like a double dip. I also, um, it's not even at the ten percent, so, um, kind of talking through that and that, that's something I, I don't know about the, if the city has a perspective or if it's something that we just are discussing up here, but, um, that was the one major thing that I noticed that wasn't on your list.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that, um, so I would expect that in the next, next iteration for sure.
Justin?
Through, I, I, and this is, I guess, more of a question to the commission, is the development of that second part? I mean, do we have to have that to decide on the PUD? I mean, part of me feels like we do.
Part of me feels like we do, but I'm willing to be flexible. So, do we call it, do we call it two separate PUDs? Do we?
I mean, is it a separation of the land? I mean, we're, we're creating, you know, zoning and requirements that are going to be binding through the PUD for something that's completely undeveloped, but is, it's still falling into the requirements. I mean, that, just for fear of the unknown, that scares me a little.
Sure, I mean, it's not required, um, but phase two likely, based on just initial conversation tonight, it is going to require that rezoning anyway. Future land use plan calls for mixed use, it's zoned out one right now, so I think there's still a lot of opportunity to, you know, for, for this body to really affect that. And I think the applicants want, want that type of input for phase two as well, so it's not required to make one contingent upon the other.
Do we want to have some, sorry, do we want to have some direction regarding, I guess, the future use of that property?
Or are they two separate sites?
Yeah, is it two?
I feel like they're two separate.
Separate parts.
That's what I was asking for clarity. It's this piece different than the other piece, whereas the thirty-four all part of this PUD, even with the second half not having a site plant portion.
And does the developer even want to be restricted for that second piece with whatever we decide on for this piece?
I mean, the underlying zoning is already different from the two, so.
Right, yeah, we were recommending not making it contingent, just knowing that the rezoning gives, yeah.
It'll be a separate piece, though.
Right.
Is it divided in the legal description of the land like that?
No, I think a parcel split would probably come as part of this, yeah, so.
I'm less scared.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Good.
All right, any other questions? I think we're there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number seven, our administrative items. We have, it sounds like an exciting update, um, from our zoning board liaison, Mr. Williamson.
I'll keep this very quick. Uh, we have a lot of people coming before us, looking for, complaining about, uh, the five-foot setback requirement for garages in the rear of the building for a lot of people, with the lots being as small as they are in Ferndale, as you know, if you're five feet off the rear and five feet off the side of your garage, you're sometimes putting your garage almost in the middle of the backyard. We had some discussion about this at some point during the update, uh, of the master plan the last time and then we had some discussion about whether it was, um, really necessary to have that setback be at five feet instead of something smaller. Three feet was the number that was thrown around. I've since learned that it was three feet, actually, up until, I think, the two thousand eight, two thousand ten, uh, the master plan process, the last master plan process. I've since learned that it was three feet actually up until, I think, the two thousand eight, two thousand ten, uh, the master plan process, the last master plan process. And that at that point, the ordinance was changed to make a five-foot setback instead of a three-foot setback. So I'm wondering first, is there anyone who has a specific recollection as to why that was done? And, uh, second, um, my suggestion, as long as the, the fire marshal doesn't have an issue with it, uh, would be to, um, maybe recommend that council revisit that setback and see if it is absolutely necessary for it to be five feet. Is it, there isn't a compelling reason for it to be five feet, from what I'm seeing and, you know, and, and the recurring complaints that we're getting from people in the community is that it's kind of a, it's creating hurdles for people to have that large setbacks, so.
Yeah, and I can follow up a little bit on that. I spoke with the fire marshal today, um, he had said, you know, as long as he is allowed to put in some carve-outs in the ordinance regarding fire-rated construction, which actually the Michigan Building Code would require for three feet anyway. And he had some additional notes that he wanted to send me about, uh, making sure the, the roof, because he, he was concerned that sometimes a fire from a roof can jump from three to six feet, so he just said, as long as there's some carve-outs that, you know, meet Michigan Building Code, he doesn't see why that wouldn't be an issue, only for accessory structures, like you said.
Right.
But, and it would just be for the side yard, not rear, um, rear yard. The rear yard would be five feet, huh? Sorry. The rear yard, for some reason, that's really hard for me to say. That would be five feet still? Correct.
So it's a side of?
Just side only, yes.
And is there a reason behind that?
Yeah, why, it's not three at the rear?
Why, it's not three at the rear, um, typically because of easements issues. I think other communities, our new building official is from Birmingham, um, I think he was saying that Birmingham, I think, they have, uh, for rear yards, um, I think it is three and less, e- unless, uh, but you are required to show a, uh, property survey. We don't require that right now, um, for single-family homes, um, just because of the expense, uh, but that's something we could consider. I can talk to him and see more about how that went in Birmingham, but he, his, he did say that if you go any closer than five, you do want a property survey because of sewer use. I mean, that was actually one of the, a sewer easement and a rear yard, uh, issue was one of the agenda items last night that we didn't end up talking about because the applicant didn't show, but, um, but typically there's been some sewer issues, um, and so that supersedes the.
Now, withstanding an easement, I mean, was, are you getting people that want three feet in the back too? I mean.
Well, yeah, because most of the, um, existing properties or many of the existing properties, you're talking two feet or eighteen inches
Right.
from the lot lines on both the rear and in the, the side, and when you got a lot that's four thousand square feet, or right around four thousand square feet, and you're pushing at five feet, five feet, uh, for a two-car garage.
Right, I think when we're pushing density in our master plan and then we're, we're
Right.
kind of removing density through setbacks, it's gonna counter.
Yeah, um, and I can ask an opinion, a specific opinion about the rear yard again and, and ask the building official.
And building eighty, a single family.
But it was related to easements in building utilities, so even if, so if there weren't, if you had a property survey that showed there were not any utilities, then, you know, that could work. That, that would, that, a property survey does add an expense, but maybe it is time to do that with the amount of development we have going on, I'm not sure, so.
Well, if it's that important to people to get the extra two feet, maybe they should undertake the, the.
Right, right.
Does anyone that was on, um, planning commission at that time remember why, uh, any discussion about that?
Doesn't stick out. Why? Um, I, I think that, would it have any difference with, like, in-law apartments or anything else that we're allowing to be built with a garage?
Um, I don't know, I can ask, yeah.
I can't really think specifically of those.
Yeah, we all kind of looked at each other in minutes, so.
There were a lot of minutes. I know.
A lot of meetings.
Recently that it was moved from three feet to five feet, which is why I brought it up.
Yeah. It's actually a really good point about the in-law apartment, because is the fire looking to have ten feet between, like, occupied dwellings? Is that the reasoning? Um, there is a requirement for accessory dwellings to be ten feet from the principal building. But I mean, because since there can be units now in some of these garage, previously what were accessory garage. I mean, we've, I'd actually like to bring forth like a whole discussion about accessory buildings because, because of that and also I think the max height for accessory building right now is like fifteen feet, so it makes it tough to really make it livable, um, there.
We were talking carriage houses, a lot in the master plan.
We were, so, yeah, so it's probably time.
That's a good call, Krista, I wonder, yeah, might benefit factor, I can really dust that cobweb off right now.
Yeah, um, speaking of density, she brought it up, Commissioner Farr, uh, Ian and I were also talking about the R2 lot widths right now, the, I mean.
Oh, the weirdness.
Yes, it's, it's fifty.
Specifically identified during the master plan.
Yep, so, so that's, it's, you know, it's worthwhile to bring that forward too, so.
Does that help with direction or did we just muddy the waters even more?
Well, maybe a little bit of both, I, I feel like, like I, I, I'd like to, to move to have a recommendation to city council to revisit these issues, but I'm thinking, do we need to have, uh, more clarity from the fire marshal before we do that?
Yeah, he's happy to put together a recommendation, so.
Would it help if we hold the minutes from that?
From master planning?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would actually, so we could see what the specific, if any specific reasons were given for that, wanting to change what we made initially.
Makes sense.
Can we just search for setback?
Five feet.
I always think somebody just pulls the six-sided die out.
Yep. I just had two other administrative items if we're good on that one.
Just roll the dice and whatever number comes up is one of them.
Oh, all dice are six-sided, I was like.
Not all, not all, there's, there's a percentage of dice. We'll talk later, but.
I got it, sorry.
Um, just two other quick items, um, just want to make sure everybody saw the map workshop survey, uh, link in there, make sure you pick your date, I think most people have.
I did.
Not required, but I know there was a request and we do have some new board members, so, um, it'll be a full day, but we will, we'll, we'll feed everybody, so.
It'll be fun.
Yeah, so.
Yay, zoning.
Yep. Um, right now it looks like two, the first two weekends in December are the contenders, so get your picks in by the end of this week and then we'll, we'll solidify that. Um, and then December meetings, right now we have two, uh, the sixth and I think the twentieth. If the commission's interested, we could combine and just do one on the thirteenth, it might be a longer one depending on what pops up between now and then, but I wanted to offer that as an option, so.
So in November, we've got one?
We, in November, we have two right now.
But want to consolidate the one?
Uh, December, want to consolidate.
You're talking about December, wait, refresh me, so November, we've got?
I think it's the sixth, I'll say.
No, eighth?
It'd be the first, the eighth, the fifteenth.
First and fifteen.
First, correct, yeah.
First and fifteen, got it, first and fifteen.
And then, uh.
Thank you, so then December, we're looking at, I'm sorry, six and twenty?
Yeah.
I like they will not be at the November first meeting?
Okay.
That's two of us, I'm in trial starting October thirty-first.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I, I'm fine, whatever the commission prefers in terms of December, whether you want to try and consolidate and just have one really long one or two, uh, sort of bite-sized ones, uh, it does, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, uh, since we've got a couple people absent, I'll just send an email and then we can figure that out.
Yeah, I'm not traveling or anything, so.
Okay.
I'd rather have one meeting if we could.
Yeah.
Whatever you guys want.
All right, cool.
All right. Sounds like there's either no opinion or one meeting.
All right, clear as mud.
So we will then, uh, we will adjourn at nine fifteen PM. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
So much more discussion about recreational vehicles.
I know.
I know, you didn't see that, because at the last meeting it was a highly talked about topic.
I totally missed the whole thing.
Well, I mean, I was really, this is, yeah, it's gotta get clarified.